Good evening. It's seven o'clock and would like to welcome you to our regular city council meeting. Turns out this is our only regular city council meeting since it's the month of December and not too many want to meet Christmas week if we can avoid it. So, anyway, this will be our one meeting and trust all will have a pleasant holiday. Would like to call the council back to order. We have been meeting in closed session. We will talk about that in just a moment, but would like to ask Madam Clerk for a roll call, please.
Councilman Ziprick?
Present.
Councilman Peterson?
Present.
Councilman Popescu?
Here.
Mayor Pretambury-Riggsby?
Here.
And Mayor Brower?
Here.
All present.
As I just mentioned, we have been meeting in closed session since approximately 6:00 PM and had some items both on the city council agenda and the redevelopment agency agenda. Would like the city slash redevelopment agency attorney to give us a report on those, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the city council agenda, item 1A was a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated or potential litigation. The council met and conferred with the city attorney. There's no formal action to report at this time. Item 1B was a conference with real property negotiator. Again, there was a direction and information given, no final action. On the redevelopment agency agenda, items 1A and 1B were real property matters, where discussions and information were exchanged. There was no action taken in closed session on those items as well, although one of those items is on the open session agenda for action later this evening. Thank you. If you would please stand and join me in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. To Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet as a city council and as a community to look at the issues and problems before us. We ask for your wisdom. We ask for your forbearance. We ask for your kind spirit to be with us this evening and thank you for listening to our prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
This brings us to the oral reports from the public of issues that are not on the agenda. I don't have any slips for anyone. If it's on the agenda, please wait till then. I do see Mr. Wiley raising his hand, so please come forward. And if there's anyone else that has any item, I'll give you one more chance after this, but don't see anyone else so far. Mr. Wiley?
Thank you, sir. Wish holidays, good holidays to everybody. And one suggestion I would like to make to Jarb and the council be aware of, the light that you've got there at New Jersey, when it goes on, check because the one at San Tim, if you're in the slow lane, you may get a little confused between a red light and a green light because they're just about together. You know, they're just off a bit and maybe there needs to be some type of additional piece put on so that it will block out the San Timoteo sign because you don't want somebody coming there and saying, "Oh, it looked green, but we're in a red light." They're not on yet, but I have noticed that, that they may be right close together in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items that aren't on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on. We've listed the conflict of interest. There's potentially an item or items that may involve that and we will deal with that as it occurs with each item. The next item is listed as number two on the agenda and it's an exciting and fun one that we'd like to recognize someone in our community that has really contributed to our community in a very positive fashion and, you know, sometimes puts us adults to shame when it's individuals that are a whole lot younger than some of us as adults. But I think a lot of you may be aware, and we've had some pictures in previous council meetings, been in the newspapers, of trying to develop some signage and so forth for some of the trail systems that we have in the South Hills. And, you know, one of the problems were people not knowing where certain trails were or what to even call them and potentially even getting lost. So, Troop 33 of Boy Scouts and Nathan Price in leading the way have gone into those areas and put some names and so forth in place in the South Hills Preserve and that's something that we as a community and city council would like to recognize and thank you for your efforts. I have a small certificate of appreciation and I'll just literally read it. Certificate of appreciation presented to Nathan J. Price and grateful appreciation or recognition of organizing and implementing placement of trail name signs in the South Hills Preserve and signed by the city council and I would love to have you come forward and present this to you. And if you'd like to share any words, you're welcome. You don't have to either, totally up to you. Thank you for your efforts and everyone else that helped you with that. Great accomplishment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
While we're on that subject, I believe you had indicated that the county has now done something on the land up there?
Yes, sir. We are now the proud owner of the additional land. It's actually the detention basin that belonged to the county. They already gave it to us, so now they can use that land for the trailhead for the South Hill Preserve.
So, how many acres is it? It's a few more places for them to put a few more signs up.
But it is exciting. I mean, I have heard from a lot of people, access and continuity of trails, very difficult. Now, we literally have ways that people can get from Holder Crooks Park to, you know, very large distances and all interconnect and not be trespassing, so that's terrific.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know how far up the trail these gentlemen have gotten, but have you gotten all the way to the high point yet or you're working your way up to the highest point in the hills?
I haven't been to the highest point. I haven't been to the sign up there yet, but I've been there.
Okay, it's 800 feet higher than Holder Crooks Park, from the lowest point to the highest point. And we have about 16 miles of trails, last I counted, within our preserve up there, so you're getting a lot of exercise, I gather.
Probably almost got snow on top of there last night.
Probably so.
All right, very good. Thank you. Item number three, presentation by Southern California Edison regarding technical assistance and technology incentives rebate. And I will let you introduce yourselves since we have a couple of you present and good to have you here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Linda Lopier-Artiz from Southern California Edison. This is my colleague Beverly Powell of Southern California Edison, who I know that you know. Earlier in the year, Southern California Edison and the City of Loma Linda partnered to reduce the energy consumption that was used by the city. And along with Gerald Wilson of Southern California Edison, the city partnered with us and they were able to reduce the energy consumption on their water pumping operations quite substantially. And so it is my pleasure this evening to give to you, Mr. Mayor, a check from Southern California Edison in the amount of $230,000. I'm sorry, $53,000, $253,000. So, if you wouldn't mind coming forward?
Sure.
Can you take a picture?
Always glad to accept checks. And I'll point out, it's made out to the city, not to me. Got to be clear on this. But that's very exciting and a lot of efforts from many individuals went into this, so...
We appreciate your part here with us because it's really important that we all see you.
I would like to add that we use this money to install the computer hardware and software for our pumping system, so this is reimbursement. We already spend the money.
Need one more or you got it? Good. Thank you. No matter what end of the spectrum we may be on the global warming issue, I think all of us would agree it's reasonable to save money and energy and the timing is very appropriate based on the other activities. Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to add that we have a city staff here. Jeff Peterson, our associate engineer, who's been working closely with Edison. In addition to installing its hardware and software, we're also reducing the energy consumption around the city too, so...
Next item is also a fun item, Muscular Dystrophy Association Presentation. I think most of us are quite familiar with all the efforts of the fire department and filling the boot and so forth to help out with raising funds and Muscular Dystrophy Association. I would like to recognize them for their efforts and please continue from here.
Yes, this June, the Loma Linda Fire Department, their family, friends and other community members participated in the second annual Fill the Boot fundraising event and the three-day event was very successful, raising $24,374, which was $2,500 more than last year. And the funds raised from the event will stay in the local community benefiting people with neuromuscular diseases. Specifically, the funds will help a specialized clinic at Loma Linda University Medical Center fund research projects in San Bernardino and send local children in Loma Linda to a week-long summer camp up at Lake Hughes. And on behalf of the MDA, it is a privilege to present this plaque to Aaron and Mike from the Loma Linda Fire Department. And I would also like to thank the members of the Loma Linda community for doing such a fabulous job because it wouldn't have been possible without their support, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also would like to add that slide just passed. Some people may realize Loma Linda actually, due to the amount of their donations, the amount we've raised, have actually been invited to the actual telethon TV show, have actually represented the community on that national platform the last couple of years. I recently actually found out myself, I was in Riverside at the Cal Chiefs meetings and representatives from the MDA were there and had a list of the actual earners and communities and we had, it was LA County, LA City, Orange County, one or two other metropolitans, and then there was the City of Loma Linda. So certainly our hats are off to the citizens, to those that come through that intersection. They certainly give heartily to that cause and guys to you and your families that are out doing it, but certainly a community effort in that regard and so tune into the telephone, telethon and you'll see Loma Linda represented quite well.
That's great. Good thing the traffic, I guess, is fairly slow through there. No, really appreciate all your efforts. It's a great accomplishment and something that makes all of us proud as a community and so thanks.
Thank you.
Great. And Chief Bender, since have you poised and ready there, we have some information on FireEngine?
Just really a brief announcement that the Type 3 apparatus has arrived. We took delivery and acceptance of it. Since then, there's been some equipment mounting, some radio mounting with the county shop, but that vehicle is complete and should go in service within the week. Just a couple of slides to help represent to the community really what the element of a Type 3, where that really does its job. So, we will begin preserving the preserve quite soon, so Jeff, is that next week will be in service, be online?
Yeah, in a couple of days.
So, anyway, it's just that brief announcement on that.
Well, it's very positive, help with providing more public safety in some of those areas we just talked about and so forth, so it's great.
The scouts, I think, had already left or they would like to borrow that.
All right, maybe not quite as exciting next item, but important item and fiscal issues and so forth and related to audit report and asking if I could with the permission of the redevelopment agency chairman to kick this item off in relation to our audit presentation?
Permission granted.
We have a joint meeting related to presentation of the audit for the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2009, and I will let our finance director and auditor present and carry on from this point, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We have Steve Larson here from Caparician Larson, who is our independent audit firm. He will be presenting the audit side of it and I'll be presenting in another presentation the financial summary numbers from the audit report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. And I admit, it is not as exciting as a fire truck. Appreciate that. Responsibilities. I am required to inform you of your responsibilities and our responsibilities regarding this audit in accordance with auditing standards. The city's responsibilities represent the city's financial position and results of its operation fairly and in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. The city's responsibility is to include adopting sound accounting policies, to provide reasonable accounting estimates, to establish and maintain appropriate internal controls and to prevent detect fraud. What did I do?
Just a second, Steve.
Our responsibility is to obtain a reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, not an absolute assurance, but a reasonable assurance. Examine on a test basis evidence supporting the financial amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. To assess the accounting principles used and the estimates made, to evaluate the overall financial statement presentation, to review the city's internal control policies and procedures, and to express an opinion on the city's financial statements. CNL's audit efforts. We planned the engagement and we assessed the city's accounting policies. We reviewed, tested, evaluated the various city internal controls. We reviewed and tested the city's compliance with federal grant requirements. We validated the city's significant account balances to supporting documents and third-party pieces of paper. We obtained information directly from attorneys, banks, fiscal agents and others as we deemed necessary. We reviewed the basis of various management's estimates. We reviewed the city's financial statements for adherence to generally accepted accounting principles and we performed year-over-year comparisons of specific account balances. The primary financial statement before you for the city is called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That's the thick document, which Diana will be discussing the numbers here shortly. Included in that document is our audit report. It's a set of basic financial statements, which includes the management's discussion analysis, we call that the MDA, a set of government-wide financial statements, which takes a look at the city as a whole. In that set of financials, there is a statement of net assets, which used to be the old balance sheet, and a statement of activities and changes in net assets, which basically is the income statement of the city. There is a set of fund financial statements. The notes to the basic financial statements are available for additional disclosures, additional discussions on various financial statement items. There's a required set of supplementary information, which includes comparison of budget and the general fund plus discussion on the other post-employment benefit. And finally, there's some supplementary information, more detail on the various funds. In addition to the CAFR, the redevelopment agency financial report is included under separate cover. There is a single audit report, which is basically the conclusion of our efforts in evaluating the adherence to various federal grant programs the city receives. The GAM limit, which is a required review of Prop 13 requirements. And finally, there's a communication to the governing body, which is you. Our opinion. The financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Significant accounting policies have been consistently applied year-over-year. Estimates by management are reasonable and disclosures as required by generally accepted accounting principles are properly reflected in the financial statements. There were no disagreements with management. No material errors or irregularities were discovered. There were no single audit findings. In other words, there are no compliance issues with federal grants were discovered by us. There are no accounting issues that we discovered. No material weaknesses in internal accounting controls. No compliance issues identified. And one other item that's not here, we discovered no inappropriate behavior from a financial That completes my report. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. We have some sister cities around us that public information that they're in serious financial trouble and there were mistakes made and all sorts of things. It's been in the newspaper. Is it possible that could be the case here? In other words, do auditors pick that kind of stuff up or should they pick it up or is that not something that auditors make comments on or pick up?
Yes, yes, and yes. We should be trying, we do look for inappropriate activities, inappropriate events. Can we find them? Can we find all of them? No, we're only looking at a small sample. We rely on the internal controls, the checks and balances in the process, but we evaluate those checks and balances very carefully and we assess risk of material misstatement. We are looking for big things. The small stuff can slip under the radar, but we also look at small stuff as well. We will look at transactions that are in hundreds and thousands and millions of dollars as well as transactions that are in the thousand-dollar range, again, on a test basis. To be honest with you, an auditor of a financial statement scope, not a compliance and not an operational audit, but a financial statement audit, is very difficult to find fraud. When we do find it, we will report it immediately. In the case of Loma Linda, we found nothing that would lead us to believe there is any wrongdoing, any inappropriate accounting behavior, any significant material errors in the financial statements.
Not even the auditors can save cities from bad management. Sorry, couldn't resist. Other questions for our auditor? If not, thank you very much and the next part of our report will be with our finance director.
Good evening. And I'm just going to present a quick overview of the ending results of our financial statements. We have the audit report in front of you. It's this document. It's the CAFR as the auditor mentioned and it's for the citywide audit report.
Can everybody hear okay? Microphone working?
Stretch it out a little. So, as auditors mentioned, we have certain responsibilities as management that we have to have, you know, present our financial statements in an appropriate accounting accepted principles. We also have to, you know, have sound accounting policies. We have reasonable accounting estimates. Not everything, we don't know everything at the end of the year, so we have to, you know, use estimates to, in our best judgment, to determine ending numbers, establish and maintain internal controls and prevent and detect fraud. So those are part of our internal controls that we practice in the finance department and throughout the cities that we improve in. The CAFR consists of several sections. There's an introductions section that has our transmit a letter. We have annually, we apply for a GFOA certificate of achievement of excellence. This certificate that's in the CAFR is for last year's financial report. We will be submitting this report for this year's achievement award and from all, you know, we should qualify and we should get our certificate of achievement for that, for this fiscal year. Then we have a list of principal officers in our organization chart. As the auditor mentioned, these are the key components of the financial statements, which financial statements are included and they're all in the body of the document. Then we have what's called a statistical section, which shows some financial trends, revenue capacity, debt capacity, some demographic and economic information and operational And then we have our financial statements. One is the citywide as a whole, which includes the RDA, and then we also produce a separate one, which is the RDA by itself. And just to go over the ending results of the financial statements, for our government-wide financial statements, we have the net assets, which is our ending balances. As you can see, we present governmental activity and business-type activities. And here, we're just presenting the total net assets at the end of the year. We have investment in capital assets, net of related debt. We have restricted assets and then we have unrestricted net assets. Here, we are presenting the change in net assets and we give you a comparison from last year to this year, so we can see what our governmental activity, the cost of our governmental activity, net of program revenues were and our business-type activity, net of program revenues were. And then you can see what we have, some general revenues, which are more general taxes and revenues that can be applied that are not program-specific, so those are just considered general revenues. And then you can see our change in net assets, which is for our citywide this year, it was 4.9 million. When you look at last year's... When you look at last year's, it's a little deceptive, but there were certain program revenues that are one-time revenues that we received last year, which were either grants or contributions of infrastructure to the community. The general fund, and you'll notice the general fund change in fund balance, I'll get to the next slide, but this just shows the end result of, from one year to the next, of the general fund, which is our key operating fund. And you can see that we have 8 million this year as our ending fund balance, and last year we had 7.7 million. And we also show a percentage to the annual expenditures. So of general fund balance, we have 57% of our general fund balance compared to expenditures This will show you the change in general fund balance. As you can tell, we have revenues of 13.9 million this year, well, 8.09, expenditures of 14.1. We have other financing sources, which are transfers in and transfers out of 400,000, 807,000, sorry. So we have net operating addition to our fund balance of $295,000. So you can see from our beginning to our ending, we now have the 8 million in fund These are our business-type activities, which are, some people will look at them as enterprise funds or proprietary funds. They operate on charges, so we collect fees for services we provide in these funds. These are our water fund, our sewer fund, and our Loma Linda-connected communities. And this is the ending change in net assets for the year, for these funds. We also have our redevelopment agency, which is considered a governmental activity. We'll show our restricted net assets and our unrestricted net assets. You can tell we have restricted of 3.4 million and unrestricted of a negative 17.6 million. The RDA operates on its issuing, it issues debt to operate, and so you'll see the huge negatives, but that's because it has more liabilities than it actually has assets in an operating year. So that's, so you'll have a total net asset or deficit of 14.1 million. In this particular year, the result is we issued debt for our low-mod housing fund. We issued bonds to do, we're doing two projects for low-mod and very low-income units, so that's where that money will go to. And this is just the statement of activity, change in net assets, and this will show, you know, the, like I said, you have program expenditures and program revenues, and this is the result of those programs. And the RDA relies on mainly tax increment that it receives, which is a general revenue, so it'll show the 10.2 million, and we have a change in net assets of 2.2 million. And that's it for the financial report. As far as, that's just a brief overview of the ending result numbers. If you have any questions, we can go over any details you would like to ask.
If I could just comment on a couple of things. We are getting near the midpoint of our current fiscal year. Obviously, this is an audit from our last fiscal year, but just want to mention that the Budget Committee will be meeting with city manager and yourself, I believe, next week, as I understand it. We will be looking at a mid-year budget review with council then shortly thereafter. And so, you know, again, we look at these static points with arbitrary timelines, but this is not something we just looked at at the end of June. We're continuing to look at the issues as they evolve during the year, and we'll have more to say about that probably in our next council meeting or two. The Redevelopment Agency Chairman, Rick Spie and myself, we met for an hour with the auditors this afternoon and evening, and went into more detail on some of these statements. But, you know, it's a little confusing, there's always so many parts of the equation, some things such as net assets increase the general fund slightly more to the positive, but liabilities such as indebtedness with the redevelopment agency has increased, all the reasons for that with state law, so at least for myself, and just a very crude summary statement, I think the audit at least shows me that we're at least relatively on target with where we thought we would be by the end of the year. We're certainly not in the grave financial crises that some neighboring cities have, but we're certainly not flush with funds either. And I will leave it at that with just those brief comments and ask the council for additional questions or comments. Otherwise, I think the only actions that we need is simply to receive the reports, and we will do note that we've received the audit report. And if there's no further questions or comments on that particular item...
I would just like to make one further comment.
Sure.
I just wanted to thank all the city staff and my staff for all their efforts in producing this document. I know we put a lot of pressure on them, and this year, you know, it did take us a little bit longer, but we did have, you know, a lot of good people working on it.
And I want to thank you on behalf of the council and the citizens. It's been a tough year for everybody. You've had cutbacks and so forth, but you've come through, and we appreciate everyone's effort on that, so thank you. Unless there's any other actions needed or other comments or questions, audit report has been received, and the financial report as presented has been received. Thank you. Next item is item number seven, and this is a public hearing related to a change in our municipal code potentially. And it's for, simple terms, the nomenclature that's been applied to this type of, of language is a so-called revolving door. I would like to start this item with our city attorney bringing us up to date with where we stand on this item and his advice to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have before you this evening the draft ordinance, which has been prepared. As you recall, the California Government Code already imposes certain restrictions on former city council members or city managers for a period of one year after they leave their positions with any city. They are prohibited from representing outside parties before the city for compensation. And I've included in your packet this evening, or distributed to you, a summary of Government Code, Section 87, 406.3. And I have also given you a side-by-side comparison to the draft ordinance, which summarizes the draft ordinance, and you can compare some of the provisions to see where the proposed ordinance would expand upon what is currently California law. We are, we have the option under the Government Code to add to the restrictions contained in the Government Code, and that's what the draft ordinance does. It expands the coverage from one year to two years after the person leaves the city. It also expands the coverage to certain work that may be done without compensation. And it also expands the numbers of individuals who would be subject to restrictions, to include designated employees who file a statement of economic interest each year, and members of the Planning Commission, or if there were other commissions, they would also be subject to it. So I have tried to summarize, as best I could, the provisions of the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I would remind you one last time that this particular draft ordinance did come from another city. It was suggested that we look at this, and so I don't claim any pride of authorship. If there are provisions that you would like to change, to add to, or subtract from, that is within your discretion. My only comment on that would be that if you make changes of a substantive nature tonight, then this would be a new first reading or introduction, and we would have to have a further second reading on a future date. So I'd be happy to address any issues or concerns, but this is a public hearing as well.
And just a quick comment on that, obviously, I guess you could kind of say the converse of that, if we do approve this tonight, certainly it can be changed as well in the future. It's not like Meads and the Persians are left with it forever, so.
That's correct.
Anyway, this is a public hearing. Unless there's any immediate questions for the city attorney, I was going to open that, but if there's questions for city attorney, I think this would be a reasonable time for that. Councilman Peters?
On, on the front page, item C, last, when we talked about this last time, there was a clause in there having to do with nonprofit organizations, that they were exempt, I believe, and we removed that, I think, wasn't that last time, what happened last time? So I'm wondering why number C makes the statement to prevent private for-profit business entities from obtaining a perceived unfair advantage dealing with the city. Why is the term in there, why is it limited, why is C limited to for-profit entities? Why is that statement made just for them and not any entity, since we removed the exception for nonprofit entities?
Well, we could certainly delete that. I would interpret that as a small inconsequential cleanup correction.
I would agree with that.
On, on applicability, 252.060, Part B, I'm a little bit confused about B. It says provisions of this chapter shall not apply to prevent a former city or agency official or designated employee from working as a supervisor of a person who is doing things that are prohibited. I can't, I don't know how that, I don't understand that.
Well, this provision, I believe, again, I did not draft it, but it appears to apply to a situation where a former city official or employee is working for a firm, and perhaps that person is in a management position. The firm has business before the city on behalf of a client, and a lower-level person is responsible for that. The intent here appears to be that so long as the former employee, who's the manager, is not involved with the activity and receives no income from that activity, that this prohibition would not apply. In other words, you wouldn't consider that the employee is responsible for what an underling or subordinate was doing, as long as the person doesn't actively participate in the representation before the city or receive any compensation directly related to that. Now, that could be a little problematic if fees are not distributed in a way that you could account for those fees properly and make sure that they don't flow to the former official, who under this provision would be prohibited from receiving any part of the fees from the city work.
So you might understand this, I still don't understand it, I guess, and that is, you got somebody, let's say a former city councilperson is supervising another person, it would be prohibited for the former city councilperson to do the work, but he could be the boss of somebody under him who is doing that, as long as he doesn't try to influence that guy. Is that the point?
Correct.
I see. The wording is really strange there. I don't, it sounds like, it says persons performing work that would be prohibited. It sounds like they are, it sounds like they're breaking the law. They're doing something that's prohibited.
Well, it would only be prohibited if the former official were doing the work.
I see.
In other words, it's not prohibited if somebody else in the firm is doing the work and the former official is not involved and doesn't get paid for that portion of the firm's work.
Okay. And there's one other thing that I still don't quite get clear, and that is, can a person who has, was the owner or shareholder in a private business, represent their business or themselves?
Yes. I believe that the intent here is only to prevent a person from leaving the city and going to work as a representative for a third party, and theoretically benefiting from his former position in the city by doing work for other persons. If a person is representing his or her own interests, I don't believe the prohibition's
If there's no other questions immediately for city attorney, I will open this as a public hearing. And I do have, I believe, one slip, and have a former city councilman and chairman of the planning commission, Mr. Nichols, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brower, and honored members of the council and staff. It's great to be back here, looking at you guys from this side. This issue was first brought to my attention when I, you know, looked up on the website and read it over. It didn't have a concern per se when I first read it, but talking to Mr. Holloway after the last planning commission meeting, Rich, you'd mentioned that perhaps members of a firm, an owner of a firm that was a former official of the city, that while that person wasn't directly representing a third-party entity directly, if they were in any way receiving any compensation indirectly because of activities of the firm, that that could be potentially a problem. And your summary here doesn't directly address that, that I could see. So that would be, you know, my concern in general for me personally and others that might be in a similar position. I'm a shareholder and owner in my firm, HMC Architects. I have made it a point, while on the council, in between being a council member and now a planning commissioner, and now on the planning commission, to never personally represent any third-party interest in Loma Linda before you or the commission, planning commission. But certainly, our firm does do work. My other partners do work for the university and the medical center. And if for some reason my receiving some shareholder benefit, profit distribution, whatever you might call it, somehow implicates me personally, by your interpretation, Rich, in this, I definitely would want to, you know, express my concerns about that and try to, I guess, if it goes forward, I guess, seek a waiver or something like that, or find out what my options are. But that would be my comment as I understand it.
Mr. Mayor, we're happy to address that. It appears that a planning commissioner is in a separate category from other city officials, and under this ordinance, you would be fine, as long as you do not represent anybody before the planning commission. That's the only prohibition that would apply to a member of the planning commission who leaves the city position and goes to work outside. You simply cannot repre... You simply cannot represent for two years a third party before the planning commission upon which you formerly served. So if you were a city councilmember leaving the council, the other rules would apply, which might affect you if you received income, even if you didn't participate in the representation. We talked about that a minute ago. But as a planning commissioner, those rules would not apply to you.
So one of my partners or subordinates or whatever could present to the planning commission on a project that I could potentially receive indirect compensation for, and that wouldn't be a problem?
Correct.
No? Okay. Thank you very much.
I would also add that we do have, one of the provisions in the ordinance is that there is a waiver opportunity where if you have any questions as to whether, what participation you should take, you can bring it up in front of us. And I understand your concern. In fact, I had a lengthy conversation with one of the other planning commissioners, Mr. Rojas, who also happens to be an architect, and he addressed the same issue. There's sometimes, some of you may already have clients, and if for whatever reason you're no longer on the planning commission, you still want to be able to represent those people without violating the law. One of the provisions of the ordinance is that we have a waiver, and the waiver can actually be directed towards where you can represent the other party, but you're going to be somewhat limited in which you can represent them as. So it's going to be really limited to technical information, and that's pretty much consistent with FBBC rules, where sometimes even as a planning commissioner, you actually, may actually have a project in front of the planning commission. Well, the law says you can still represent in front of your own planning commission that you're a member of, you just can't vote. So it's kind of the same rules apply, and it's important for us to be able to understand that we have abilities to interpret that in a way to make sure it's fair. But it is somewhat limited in which you can represent parties of. It's going to be very, very limited to technical information, that's it. Or questions that were addressed directly to, in your particular case, an architect or maybe even an engineer who might ask a question about, you know, can the driveway be moved five feet? You can say yes, no, you know, versus if we put this driveway here, it's going to make the city really nice, and I really want you to approve it, you're going to be limited from doing things like that.
Mr. City Attorney, I was going to save this for later, but since you brought it up on the waiver, as I read the section, there's no number of votes mentioned as what would constitute approving the waiver. Does that by default just go to majority vote of the individuals? And if that's the case, I guess we'd have the option to spell out other numbers if we so chose and put that in writing?
Yes. The general rule for any council action that is not an ordinance, a resolution, or approval of an expenditure of money, is that a majority of a quorum may act. And so that would be the case here, unless you choose to increase that voting requirement. So if there are three members present, two could approve a waiver.
Okay. Thank you.
I am comfortable with the regular interpretation of majority of a quorum.
Councilman Peterson?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did have one other question, and that is, near the end, there are two sections on penalties. Why are there two separate sections? One of them is a $5,000 fine, and then we go to another section, section three, it's a $100 fine. What's the difference, what's going on?
That could be a little confusing, and the penalty under section 2.5, 2.090 is a civil penalty. Section three has the standard infraction penalty that would apply to any violation of any municipal code section. And so-
So do you get both fines, which one do you get, or both of them?
It would give the city theoretically an option to pursue an infraction as a criminal violation, or to go to court civilly and seek to enjoin a violation or obtain a civil penalty. And that's a maximum penalty. It's not an automatic $5,000 civil penalty.
Councilman Zepper?
Mr. City Attorney, if you have, somebody comes in and gets a waiver, and somebody else comes and asks for a waiver and it's not granted, and they both proceed to do the same thing, I suppose you could have a situation where one person is subject to a penalty and an enforcement fine, and the other person is not, based on whether one got a waiver and the other did not, for the same actions?
Well, any action by the city council to grant a waiver would have to be supported by some substantial evidence, but it would be discretionary on the part of the city council, looking at the factors set forth in the code and the best interests of the city. So it would be unlikely that a court would overturn a discretionary decision like that if there's some evidence in the record to explain why a particular waiver was granted. But theoretically, one person may apply for waiver, it may be granted upon some appropriate basis, and another person may not apply for waiver and therefore would be subject to prohibitions. That's true.
Doesn't that open up the charge down the line that favoritism could occur? Because there's no clear standard under who gets a waiver and who doesn't?
Well-
It's not objective, in other words?
The standards are somewhat discretionary. It provides for a disclosure of all the facts surrounding the proposed activity, and the waiver is to be in the best interests of the city or agency and not inconsistent with the purposes of this chapter. So there are some standards, but-
Pretty broad, though. If a council came up and asked the city attorney, can you come up with some findings? Usually you could come up with a finding, and if the council said, could you come up with findings not to grant a waiver, you could probably come up with those two?
Well, there is a certain amount of discretion, yes.
The concern I have is where down the line, you can have differences in a community on any number of issues. If you have one person who's in great favor with the council and another person who's not, how do you ensure the person who's out of favor is going to get the same treatment as the person who's in favor?
Well, I would certainly, if that became a common occurrence, that waivers were sought, I think the council would want to adopt some policies or perhaps some standards to follow on those waiver applications, so that you would avoid any appearance of favoritism or anything of that nature. But I would trust the council could avoid that.
Politics being what it is, it's not always easy.
Well, these applications presumably would go through staff first and perhaps the city attorney's office for comments, so that hopefully by the time it came to the council, there would be a good review on the merits of the application and a recommendation that the council will support.
There's an old principle, of course, that Lady Liberty has a blindfold on, and when someone comes to the court, justice is equal. And one of the concerns, one always has, is, you know, and I work in the court system, and you do too, and you want to be sure that you're getting the fairest deal you can for whoever you represent. And if someone's coming for the council, you want them to feel that it's an even playing field. When we start out with a law that has harsh penalties in it, and then one person can be given a waiver, and it's not really clear why, another person might not get that waiver, it seems terribly discretionary to start with. Doesn't mean the council's going to not grant everybody a waiver that comes in, but if one person asks for a waiver and is granted it, how do you turn the next person down? How does it feel fair later to the public? I don't want to restrict people's ability to get up in front of the council and ask for whatever they feel they want to have redressed. But I feel that even the access now, now becomes subject to whether you get a waiver or not, and it's loose. I know one of the things I raised with you is the article I read in the Mercury News, and I think I transmitted it to you, where there was one prosecution that it referred to, that the DA was going to try in that, I think Santa Clara County, and they backed off because they said the language here was awkward. I think that was the term that was in the press article.
Well, we could add some additional standards if the council would like to do that.
Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to give you a chance to contemplate some of those issues if you would like and continue with the public hearing. I do have a slip from Mr. Bob Stewart.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. Bob Stewart, 11695 Largo Court here in Loma Linda. I haven't been able to attend or listen to all of the discussions that have taken place on this ordinance. I know it's been kind of floating around for a while. And I'm personally a little perplexed because the city staff is here to do a lot of work and service and solve problems, and the council is here to guide and to solve problems. We're spending a lot of time and energy on something. I don't understand, Mr. Mayor, where there's a problem. But I certainly read into this problems being created unnecessarily. So I'm not in support of the ordinance. I think, as I understand from the city attorney, there are state laws in effect that certainly at the highest level, city council members, city managers, and perhaps it might even affect people who have been city attorneys, things of that level, there already are laws that guide these type of conflicts. So I'm not in support. But if this council is going to consider moving forward on it, I certainly do have some items I'd like to consider. First and foremost is the name, is I don't know where the revolving door comes from, but to me, this is a conflict of interest and delay ordinance. What you're really talking about is somebody having distinct information and knowledge that the general public doesn't have, and utilizing that for their personal gain. And to be honest, there's very few people that have that level of knowledge in the city council or in the city. And it might be senior staff, and it is the city council, those that sit in closed session. You have direct knowledge that the public doesn't get the benefit to hear and see. You get to be involved in negotiations, what was given, what wasn't given. You have that knowledge and information. So I support the state law, and I think that makes sense that there is some element there. If the council was to choose, if you wanted to say that should be two years, some other term, then that might be reasonable. But my concern is where there's a section in here, this puts forth similar obligations on the park and recreation committee, the traffic committee, the budget committee, the connected community, the north central neighborhood ad hoc, there's a Loma Linda University Technical Committee that's been trying to work on infrastructure, the trails committee, the historical committee, planning commission we heard here. You know, this gentleman has the ability to get a hold of the city attorney and satisfy his concerns. But all those other people, this is a community of volunteers. All those other people don't have access to city attorneys. They don't have access to that information. And what you're going to do is you're going to squelch the volunteers in this community participating. Because I have family members on other committees, friends on other committees, they don't understand it, and they're wondering why they should volunteer when the council is saying, we don't want you to speak up in the future. We want to basically hold your voice down. And I certainly don't understand the problem that we're trying to solve here. I think you're creating problems on all levels, and it could result in people not volunteering for committees, not participating openly, not helping their friends, their neighbors who might have an application for a building permit for anything. It could all come up. Because if I have somebody who knows about historical things, I'm going to ask their opinion, and they're going to be maybe concerned, well, I can't talk to you, I can't tell you that, because of these type of conflicts. And so this ordinance is, to me, is just a big sticky web of problems you're creating where, to this day, I've been hanging around this town for a while, I don't know that there's any problems we're trying to solve here. If there is, I'd certainly like to read about it in the paper or hear about it. So I'm real concerned that the whole section that has the commissions or committees involved, I understand, trying to put forth a little more restriction on city staff or high-level positions, and it sounds like that is part of the change, that this goes a little beyond elected officials. But us volunteers, we don't need this burden. The community doesn't need that burden. I have to slightly disagree with the city attorney. If you're going to strike a language that says any private for, or private for-profit business entity and say that now it's nonprofit, that's a material change for those of us that read this on the internet. So I think if that change is in fact going to be done, that draft ordinance ought to go for first reading, so the community knows, you know, what we're going at. That is a material change that was made available to the public to basically bring people to this public hearing. And I, Mr. Peterson also has some questions on that, and only a government can come up with supervise without participation in that paragraph that's hard to read. I don't understand that. I know what they're trying to achieve there, but that's clumsy at best. In a private enterprise, if you're a supervisor of somebody and you're not participating, you're not a very good supervisor. So I think if that ordinance is to be considered, that section should be at least studied or, you know, spend a little bit of time on some ink on that, make that thing read correctly. Because I just don't think that's a benefit to an ordinance that has those interpretations of somebody having a conflict. So again, my personal goal would be for you to not consider this ordinance. If there is a conflict, it sounds like there's state laws that could certainly be enforced should there be abuse of powers or abuse of knowledge. And if you do need to consider going forward, I think it needs to have a lot of work done, republished for public hearing, and allow people to comment and discuss it further. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, just to answer that one narrow question of the for-profit, nonprofit, my recollection at our last meeting and the passage of the first reading, it was very clearly stated and noted that we had removed any distinction in the ordinance between profit and nonprofit entities. As I understand it, the only thing we were doing tonight is just the purpose section is just cleaning up that kind of introductory language to agree with the, what we clearly indicated last time, but correct me if I am wrong.
You're correct, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, it was discussed that the prohibitions would apply to both work for nonprofit as well as for-profit entities, and so it was simply an oversight in the introductory language to fail to delete the two words, for-profit. It should read to prevent private business entities, and meaning whether for-profit or not for-profit, they would all be subject to the same rules. And that was the statement that was made at the previous meeting. That was the vote of the council that time to make that change. And I think, I think the actual operative language is very clear. The introductory purposes don't affect the actual application as spelled out in the subsequent provisions.
Mr. Christensen, I'd like to invite you forward, former planning commission member and chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It appears to me that the, I'd like to echo Mr. Stewart's comment, that this will squelch. And I would tend to use a little stronger language on that, that this would tend to silence public voices in the government that they gave permission to govern them. The government, you, the council, have set up committees to assist in the governing of the city. Commissions, committees, different committees for different things, to add citizen voices to government. This is what it's all about. It's about citizens' voices in government. And legislation that California already has is fine, seems to be working so far in the newspapers that I've been reading, that those that have made mistakes and have realized it, have reimbursed the favorite charity, or if they have been caught red-handed, are being handed over for the necessary prosecution for this. I feel that the ability to enforce something like this is going to be the unintended consequences. That's where it's going to get really, really sticky. Because when you start to say, well, you can do this, and you can do that, you can do this, and you can do that, then you start getting, you start splitting hairs, and the favoritism that I, the word that I heard that comes in is, that comes into play strongly. Okay? Okay? It appears to me from the sidelines that this, that the authorship and bringing forward of this type of a ordinance is a great, big, huge reelection bullet point. I cleaned up government. Now, if somebody has to get up and say, "The emperor has no clothes," and that's where the rubber hits the road, then, okay, I think it's just a bullet point for reelection. And it doesn't have any more, it doesn't carry any more weight than that. California has enough. Why be tyrannical about it? Why be burdensome? Why silence public opinion?
Thank you. I don't have any other slips on this item. Any others wishing to speak in the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the council for further discussion and direction and questions, et cetera. Councilman Zipriak.
One of the biggest problems, Mr. Mayor, is the part on page three, section B, 2.52.030B. And it forbids someone in this category from representing anyone else, whether or not for compensation, for council, redevelopment, any commission, or any staff of the city or agency. I don't have a problem with the "for compensation" part because that's, that's clearly in line with the idea of having a former council member or designated employee from using their position for personal gain. I, I see that. But you've got somebody being prohibited from getting up and speaking for no compensation. That, Mr. Mayor, is protected under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. You cannot take away the right of someone to get up and voice their own opinion. And how you carefully word it, whether they're representing or not, you've got to be really careful because there's a real big difference, I submit, between a compensated representative and a person who's just a volunteer getting up. The fact that somebody used to be on the city council or on a planning commission, they are exactly the people the Constitution would protect the most. And here's why. They've been in government, and they would know the arguments. If, if somebody used to be on the council and didn't like what I was doing, they ought to have the right to get up and challenge me. But if they're restricted for two years from getting up and saying anything, you just interfered with the right of expression. Now, if they're paid lobbyists, there's a real clear understanding there that you've got a right to restrict that. That's been argued about through the years. But this is very broad. Without compensation means a person cannot get up as a volunteer without being at risk on this. And if you say that's not the intent, then why is it in there?
Councilman Peskew.
I can briefly address that in a second, but I wanted to address something Mr. Stewart said. I know you haven't been here for the other meeting, so perhaps you may not be familiar with the discussion. We've actually had lengthy discussion about this and who's, who's it applied to. And it is not applied to people on the traffic committee or the historical committees. It's applied very specifically to people who have to comply with FPPC rules of filing 700 forms in Economic Economics of Interest. So it's fairly narrow. It's pretty much council members, commissioners, or people on the staff, and that's it. So that's one issue. The other issue is, you talked about the fact that, you know, we may be privy to information and later exploit that information for personal gain. That is one concern. The other concern is that we are influential for being, having knowledge of the city and having built relationships with the city. So, for example, one of the things that we want to prevent is if me or Dusty leave the council, we don't want to turn around and having, find ourselves working for a big landowner and being the person representing that landowner and coming back and saying, "I want you to put in a bunch of houses on this land, and I'll tell you why. Because I've been on the council, and I know all this information about how we're gonna, you know, you guys are going to generate a lot of revenue, and it's really good for you to put that." Those are the things we want to prevent. It's where major corporations are using former officials to benefit themselves at the expense of the community. Dr. Rixby made a very good point last time. If a project, project is very good, one in which the community likes, there's no need for them to hire for or without compensation now, which leads me to Mr. Zipriak's concern about how, why is it that we had to include foreign people who are not compensated? Well, there is no way for us to know if someone has some sort of deal, whether they get compensated or not. So if you come and talk in front of us, how would I, you can say, "I'm a volunteer," but I have no idea whether you're going to get a check later on or not. That's one issue. The other issue is that we want to prevent undue influence. So whether you get paid or not, we just don't want former officials to be used after leaving office for two years to try to further something that perhaps the community would not support, but only got supported because of their influence. And that's really what we're trying to prevent.
Like to, yeah, I'd like to respond to that.
The state law already prevents, prohibits anyone from coming back for one year. I would have no problem saying, "Two years, that'd be fine." And my question is, what is it about the state law that if we just extended the state law, which has already been frankly adopted for the entire state, where San Jose is very unique, and it has some problems? I mean, basically, if you've read the San Jose Mercury News, I passed it on to our city attorney, there was a prosecution that they discussed that they could not do because the language in the ordinance was awkward. And I haven't gone and followed up with San Jose officials myself, I just read their newspaper there. Here you've got a state law, which has already been vetted through a lot more study than we're going to be able to do. And it would be very easy, if we think there's a real issue of one year versus two years, to say, "Let's just make it two years." I wouldn't have a problem with that. And the state's been very careful how they wrote it. They did not try to exclude people who are volunteers from getting up and speaking. And you've got to be very careful, my colleagues, because the way this is written could actually prevent someone who's been voted out of office from coming back and, in a sense, campaigning. Because if they got up in front here and wanted to make a point, they might actually be arguably in violation of this law, might they not?
Comments from anyone else? Councilman Peterson?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to give him a chance to respond to that. Because that actually goes to the heart, it goes to kind of the heart of the constitutional issue here.
Anyone chooses to respond?
I think it's not simple us coming back and campaigning for a particular project. Look, there's no doubt about it. It's, if someone wanted to circumvent this law, I'm sure they can. There's no doubt about it. There's always ways to do that. But that does not preclude us from at least putting some rules in place to make some things preventable. And that's the goal here. Someone who campaigns is different when you're coming in front of us saying, "I'm here to represent developer X, and I want you to do Y and Z." And that's exactly what this law says. It doesn't say you can't come in and talk to us about why the sky is blue. Okay? People could come and speak all they want, but it's fairly clear when one lobbies what they're doing. They're basically saying, "I'm here to help approve this project."
A lobbyist, I went back and looked at some of the legal definitions, and a lobbyist is a paid representative. Mr. City Attorney, I was doing some checking on it, I don't know if you'd have a difference of opinion on that. But this is more than covering the lobbyist. This is covering an unpaid representative.
You're right.
Who's just, they're unpaid.
You're right, yes.
It should not be, that should not be either an infraction for, an unpaid person coming in giving their opinion should not be an infraction or a $5,000 fine situation.
I disagree. I still think that whether you get paid or not, you are in a position to influence, and that's what we're trying to prevent. Unduly influenced a result of your prior position as a council member.
Okay, but you look at it from your perspective. If you're, obviously, issues were thrown out on another issue, and you said, "I'm going to give my word that I did not pass something on to a group I'm part of." Your word had to be taken at that point. If somebody gets up here and says, "I'm gonna, I'm not a paid representative," why wouldn't we take their word? If somebody is here as a volunteer spokesperson, why isn't that good enough? They're not here as a paid lobbyist. They're here as an unpaid spokesperson for a point of view.
I, I'm sorry, but whether they're paid or not, that former council member is going to prevent her from doing that, which is come back and say, "Developer X is not paying me, but I really liked your project, and I want you to approve it." That person will be prohibited from doing so because that person has undue influence and perhaps might have placed into action decisions that made it easier for that developer to get projects approved. If you're in a position, if you and I are in a position to approve land for something, I'll give you an example. In San Jacinto, where there's people being prosecuted right now.
Very familiar with that.
A former developer or developer has the city council zone a piece of land for commercial use. Okay?
Yes.
He has no intention.
That's the allegation, of course. We're not trying that case here.
Okay, okay. But I'm trying to use an example of the power that we have. So they zone their land for commercial use. The developer has no intention of ever developing it, but he knows that in the future, the county's going to put a road through it. So if the council approves it as commercial land, the county's going to be forced to give that person a lot more money for it. Okay? The point I'm trying to make is that we're in a position to zone certain things. We may be booted out. It may benefit individual or a corporation. Then they're going to use us to come back and influence the rest of the council, and that's what we're trying to prevent. We're in a position to improve certain people's, I guess you would have to say, net worth. We want to make it fair, so if that person comes back, he needs to do it on his own behalf, not by using former officials. And that's what we're trying to prevent.
When you say "we," I guess the question is, you have sort of crossed the line from the classical definition of lobbying to trying to restrict someone who for no compensation is getting up and giving their own opinion. Compensation is very broadly interpreted, as you know. But if they're doing it for no compensation, how do you find that okay? That's the part that I am having a real problem with because that starts to verge onto free speech. And do they get to come and get a waiver from you? Because now you've got it built in where some people may get a waiver where it's perfectly okay for them to do all of that. How do you decide who's going to get the waiver and who's not? Who's going to get, who's going to get the boot?
I think I've pretty much summarized everything that I wanted to say on the issue.
Councilman Peterson?
I guess my first observation would be, if I have, if I have enough influence in this council to influence a decision, I've got influence enough to get a waiver. I mean, I mean, we would just go hand in hand. I mean, you're defeating your purpose right from the beginning.
That's a really good point.
If I have, if I have undue influence, I can get a waiver.
Then why are you worried about it?
I'm not.
If there's a big loophole in there, why are you worried?
I'm not, but I'm just saying that so I don't.
Actually, I'm very concerned about the people who don't get the waiver, who probably don't have the influence but would like to speak up on an issue.
I really think that the number of people, individuals involved is very limited. It's pretty much the five of us and the planning commissioners that I, that I think are going to be most likely, and maybe the city manager and a few other folks at the management level have 700 forms. Those are the only individuals. We're not talking about individuals being able to come back and talk among each other and all that. And I think people are, are taking it to an extreme to say that somehow a former council member or planning commissioner can no longer talk to other members in the community. I just think that's overreaching.
Mr. Mayor, there are two more points I think ought to be made. I think one is that the preamble under which this was introduced in an earlier meeting was a fairly accusatory one. And I think, to my colleague here, I think you made some comments along the line that there were several people, I know you've written this, at least you're quoted in the paper, at least three council members have become wealthy or made money or something along that line, and I think you've gone down that same position, saying, "There are people in the council who have made money off their positions."
I did not say that. I said there's been former council members, not necessarily in the city. I've said, "Three former council members have come back and lobbied." I'm not saying that they made money or gotten rich. You've got to be very careful in what I said.
Okay, that's, maybe I'm asking you then to clarify. So you're not saying you know of no council member who, while they were on the council, was getting wealthy?
No.
Okay, that's, I feel better about that. Because I thought that was the inference.
I'm not aware of, I should say that.
Well, no, but, but the point was that, you know, the town can become distrustful. If somebody on the council says, "I know my colleagues are getting rich from being on the council."
No, that's not what I'm implying. I'm, I'm, we're trying to prevent former council members from becoming rich as a result of getting on the council. And that's not necessarily the only issue here. We're trying to make it, the whole system fair.
Well, fairness is what this is all about. And then the other point is, Mr. Mayor, I would like to suggest that there's a state law in effect that prevents the real problem. It's already illegal. If we want to expand that law, I have no problem expanding that law because I feel it's tested, it's been studied. This law, if we're going to include a restriction on uncompensated people coming and speaking for the council in other parts of the city, I'd like to suggest we refer to the Attorney General's office and ask for an opinion, which we're allowed to do, on the constitutionality of that provision. Not the rest of it, but that one point.
Councilman Peterson?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple of other issues that are, I found very interesting here. And that is particularly the purposes of the chapter A, B, and C. B is to prevent former officials and designated employees from using their positions with the city or agency for personal gain. It is perfectly legal for me to use my position on city council for personal gain. And let me tell you how that can happen. Let's say that I own a tuxedo shop in Redlands, and I go to a League of California Cities meeting, and I meet Mr. Jones. And Mr. Jones says, "What do you do for a living?" I say, "Well, I got a tuxedo shop in Redlands." "Hey," he says, "my son is getting married next month, and I'm looking for a place to rent tuxedos. Do you have a card?" I hand him my card. He rents my tuxedos. I make 100 bucks. I have profited from my position on city council. I would never have met this man without having been on city council. So I, and that's perfectly legal for me to do. There's nothing, it would be stupid if I didn't do it. Okay. I'm on the board of directors of a pharmaceutical company in Rancho Cucamonga. One day, the CEO calls me up, and he says, "We've been sued over patent infringement. We need to get the best intellectual property attorney that we can get. We've tried all the places out east, we haven't found what we want. You know of anybody?" I said, "Sure, let me call, make some calls." So I called up Mark Hips, and I said, "Mark, I need to hire the best intellectual property attorney that money can buy. Where can I get him?" Mark Hips says, "We've got one in our firm." The CEO goes down and interviews the attorney. The attorney, we bring him on board. The attorney wins our case all the way through the federal appellate court, just next to the Supreme Court, and they're not going to take it that far. And this is a patent infringement case that we won all the way through, and it is public information, it was reported in the Wall Street Journal. Okay, that happened because of my position on city council. I wouldn't have known Mark Hips if I hadn't have been here, and my company has profited from that information. So it's going to happen. Okay, now let me give you some other problems. Let's say that my company says, "You know, we really need to expand in the inland empire. We need to, we want to build a big retail outlet. You know of a good place to do it?" And I say, "Yes, I do." I'm not on city council anymore, let's say. And I say, "Yes, I do. I can talk to Pat Morris in San Bernardino, and I can help us get a nice place in San Bernardino. Or I can call up my friend, the mayor of Redlands, and I could get us located in Redlands or in Highland or in Grand Terrace, but I can't bring it to Loma Linda. I can't bring it here. I'd love to do it, but I can't bring it here. I can bring it to all the other places. Perfectly legal for me to do that. But I can't bring it to my own city." So who's the loser here? My own city is the loser. That's crazy.
I think, in that particular case, nothing prevents that particular company from coming directly to the city and asking to be in the city. from coming directly to the city and asking to opinion to see, why is it that that business is only gonna come if they talk to you and you happen to be the only person in, out of a multimillion dollar company, that happens in that Loma Linda has a piece of land?
Well, sure.
I mean, we need to, you know, the chances of that are slim.
They're not gonna come to you because you've already said that you don't trust me, so my company's not gonna come to you for help to get to Loma Linda, I can promise you that.
I'm hoping that the companies do not come to any former council members. Those companies do come on their own in fairness. I don't want them to use former council members at, at the expense of other companies who might not have access to council members. So therefore, we might get real fair and not have them use council members. Company Y wants to come in, they're more than welcome to come in, we just don't want them hiring any of us.
Or you, or, or your other ideas, they go for a waiver, and then you decide.
I think the waiver only applies to very unique cases where there might be like, uh, Mr. Nichols said, he is an architect in this town, he already has an existing client, he happens to leave the planning commission, suddenly you don't wanna find yourself limiting from doing, when you're, by the way, it's very clear there, if you happen to have a law firm, or, not a law firm, but an architect firm or engineering firm that has other people in it, you're gonna have to end up using someone else.
I got a question. Where are these guidelines? I don't see any guidelines in here at all. I don't see anything what you're saying. I just see there's a waiver that can be granted.
The way, what I pointed out was an example of how the waiver can be applied. It's gonna be case by case basis. There's no way for us to anticipate each particular person's needs. I don't know what may happen in the future, but I don't wanna tie my hands by giving specific exemptions for a specific person or a specific group. It's gotta be dependent upon the case at the time. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future.
Doesn't it, doesn't it make you a little uncomfortable, though, the idea that you're gonna have so much discretion in the councils, whether somebody gets a waiver or not? How about we just go with the state law and say, look, if somebody's violating state law, they don't come before us. Anybody else who's not breaking the state law can come, and, and if they can convince us to something, fine.
That, that's a valid point, and I, and I appreciate that, but the problem I have with that is that state law has to be enforced by the district attorney, attorney general. Do you know how busy our district attorney is right now prosecuting so many folks who are breaking so many laws? The idea that somehow one council member comes up to him and saying, I think someone violated the lobbying rule, it, the chances of getting prosecuted are very nil, but when you make a law that's fairly clear, where all of us are aware of that the city attorney, the city manager, everybody on the staff, everybody knows each other, and they know, hey, by the way, there's a lobbying rule, if Mr. Popescu, Mr. Riggsby, Mr. Brower, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Ziprick are not on the council, and they're spending a lot of time trying to lobby us, because now they're working for developer A or company B, everybody's pretty much aware of the fact that there might be some issues here. And if the councilmen may be concerned that maybe there's a waiver that they may wanna encourage, then they can come to the council and say, in this particular case, I believe I'm entitled to a waiver, please listen to the arguments, and as our attorney said, any fair-minded person would listen to the arguments and decide whether it's proper. As far as fairness, the residents leave up to us to have the discretion. There's projects that get approved, there's projects that don't get approved. Obviously, we have to use our best judgment as to what's in the best interest of the community, and that's the only standard we have, other than actual applicable laws as well, so.
Mayor Protem, uh, any comments, uh, at this point?
My, my only comment is to reiterate my point from, from the last discussion we had, that the purpose here, there are three purposes. Only one of them is to prevent personal gain of former officials. The other is basically to be fair, and, uh, to avoid, in my view, to avoid having any projects come before the city council that are so borderline that a little bit of a shove from a former councilman, either because of personal relationships with, uh, the still-existing council people, councilmen, or because of insider information, whatever, using that information and those relationships to take a marginal, otherwise probably not approvable project and tipping it over the edge to approval. And avoiding that, I think, is, is a public good.
Isn't that achieved by the state law?
The state law doesn't address some of the issues that might arise with regard to deferred compensation and prior compensation, whether direct or indirect, and, uh, it also doesn't go long enough.
Well, I, I don't see a problem with, uh, I could support going to two years, just, uh, taking the state law and saying, we'd like to go out two years instead of one year, but don't you have a?
We can't change state laws.
Yeah, well, I was gonna address, uh, Dusty for a minute. Dusty, I know you, you, you have long said you're a civil libertarian, and I assume by that you'd say that you're very slow to interfere with civil liberties.
That's true.
Wouldn't one of those civil liberties be that a person gets up for no compensation and gets to speak their own mind?
Yes, but if that's in the furtherance of a project that would otherwise not be approvable, I would think it would be a public detriment.
So for the sake of the, what you deem the public good, we would restrict civil liberties?
No, there, look, there are very few laws that say you cannot do something. What they say is you cannot do it with impunity.
Well, actually, in the first men of the United States, you can do quite a bit. Now, you're not supposed to yell fire in a theater, there's certain laws that have been long covered, but in compensation for lobbying is one of those areas that's been regulated, but, but free speech is very closely and jealously guarded by all the courts. Would you be willing to support sending at least that one clause and letting the AG take a look at it?
Well, I don't think the AG is any more of a, of a constitutional scholar than, than the lawyers at this day.
They have a staff, they have a staff that is. They have a staff that is. I mean, they have people that are, they're very well-versed in looking at these things for cities and counties, or sending it to a law professor perhaps, that we could all agree on, someplace where there's a constitutional law professor. I, I don't think the significance of, of restricting a free speech, uh, comment is being understood here.
I have a question for you. Do you, do you think that the prohibition of our investment of buying any non-primary residence property in the redevelopment agency is a restriction of your, of your, uh, right to, uh, pursuit of happiness? Is, is that unduly restricted?
Well, I'll ask your question again, because I'm not quite following your question.
Okay, do you, do you think that there are constitutional implications of the prevention of our buying any properties within the redevelopment agency while on the, on the board?
Oh, no, no, because, quite frankly, that's a, that's a direct conflict. When we are, uh, in a financial situation, we're making decisions as governing, governing, and that would imply to us in private business as well as here. I mean, that's just standard ethics. You're not allowed to go and, and do self-dealing. Had a question on the bar exam, I remember, thirty-five years ago on that very issue.
No, why would it?
Well, that's, that's clearly you can't.
No, why would it be self-dealing for me to go to Bob Stewart and buy a parcel of land that's in the redevelopment agency to?
'Cause you're voting, you're gonna be voting the rules on that land, but, but the problem is, it's a different situation when I'm talking about. I'm talking about somebody who has no more vote, no more authority, they're, they're coming unpaid to the podium here, and they could be fined five thousand dollars for getting up and speaking on an issue of public interest. Could they not? That's the question I've got. I think that's, I'm violating the Constitution.
But it's all about undue influence.
Yeah, but it's not undue influence. It's a different issue. It's free speech.
Yeah, but you could, you could say that about, about the current law.
That's why I'd like to submit it somewhere. I, I really think there's a, a danger we're slipping into here. I think the state law is great, and the implication last meeting was that we didn't have any checks and balances. There's plenty of checks and balances right now at the state level on this whole issue. Your argument is, we've gotta go further. We have got to stop someone who's no longer in office from getting up and making a statement without compensation. They should not be allowed to talk. We should silence them. They must not talk.
I would not characterize it that way.
But that's how it reads.
Well, that's how you read it. I would not characterize it that way.
But it could be enforced that way.
I do think we could probably debate this until the wee hours of the morning. Um, I will, uh, choose to say a few words and then ask, uh, council if they choose to, uh, formulate any direction. I would consider that appropriate. Um, the comments I would have, uh, obviously no action, uh, that we take on hardly any item is ever perfect, um, and there are potential legal problems, potential, uh, practical problems that I think, uh, especially Attorney Ziprick is very good at analyzing, and has pointed out some legitimate issues. Um, however, uh, I think there is an overriding, um, concern that we make all dealings, um, in regards to influencing city officials and city council as fair and above board as, as we can make. Is something like this overreaching? I don't know. I don't think so, uh, from my understanding from city attorney. It's not gonna prevent, uh, individuals from serving on the different committees and boards, uh, that has been mentioned. If there's, if it turns out that interpretation, uh, leads to wide-scale problems with that or any other issue, uh, I hope I'll be the first, if we approve it, to repeal it and say, hey, didn't anticipate this problem, uh, let's fix it, and certainly would, would choose to do that. Um, we've seen a continuum, there was nothing in the state until, what was it, 2006, when this, uh, prohibition came through, um, that actually is, is fairly broad, uh, and I think it was high time. I just simply see this as a, uh, amplification to try and level the playing field, and the state, uh, has given us a start, and other cities, uh, in California have, uh, certainly uh, continued the little tougher language and so forth. So, um, I am not, uh, scared to give it a try. I recognize there may be, uh, those practical problems that come along, that we may need to change it, uh, maybe some issues, may even need to repeal the whole thing, but, uh, the overall, uh, goal of trying to level the playing field, make things as fair and even for everyone, that there's no advantage of someone that's been an elected official over anyone else, to me makes this worth supporting, and, um, so I will, uh, choose to support this if it does, uh, get to that, uh, point in, in the discussion, uh, this evening. I'm looking either for direction, uh, on this, or if the council chooses, uh, further discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to, uh, ask that this be referred to the Attorney General's office for review on, uh, certainly one question is whether it is constitutional or otherwise legal to restrict someone from speaking, uh, as this provides before a city council, an RDA, or any commission, or any staff of the city, or any agency of the city, for no compensation.
Is there any more?
Yes.
Clarification, uh, will you approve this, uh, with this in any way, pro, prohibit us from going ahead with the second reading? Uh, is your intent that it would do that either in parallel, or would it have to be a sequential action?
My intent is to ask, uh, for that opinion and ask if the AG could come back with it, if we can get, um, since, since no one's leaving the council at this point, uh, four, six months, you'd have plenty of time to determine, uh, if, if you wanted to pass it. And I, I think that that would be a very crucial point for protecting civil liberties. I think everybody here prides themselves on being a civil libertarian. Every one of you has, I've heard every one of you say you're very concerned about civil liberties. Even those of us that don't agree on a lot of issues, I think we take pride in the fact that we can disagree up here and, and go away and shake hands. And, and it seems to me that it's important to find out if this thing, this particular wording's going too far. I don't wanna come on as anti-reform, and I'm concerned that this is gonna be portrayed if one votes no on this, now, this person's for corruption, this person's not for reform. I think it's very important to remember, there's a state law out there that does basically what we're asking here. This is changing one thing. It's saying two years, and it's changing one more thing. You can't, you can't, uh, come before the council for free. If we were just changing the two-year part, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I, I'd, I'd be willing to even make that motion. I don't see why this burning desire to keep people from getting up, who used to serve, from getting up and speaking on issues without a waiver from the person who defeated them. What's scary about this is it's a very small town. If a person is knocked off the council, it's very likely the person who, uh, you know, if you go back in history, Mr. Ellsman was the one that, that I defeated. Different people who've been on here have replaced somebody else. The fact is, we only have five people, it's a very small group up here, and you're having to come back and ask for a waiver hypothetically from somebody you were in a campaign against. Now, what's the objectivity of that? It sounds terribly subjective. I'd rather have a rule that is uniform, but if we can't get there, I'd like to submit it to the AG and defer and table this, so we get an opinion.
Just for parliamentarian purposes, as I understand the motion, rest of the council can correct me, the maker of the motion, city attorney, I heard an action that was moved and seconded that would ask the attorney general for an opinion related to, um, the issues you said. I did not hear anything specifically in that action that would preclude, uh, going forward if that passes with a second reading of council.
No, I'm, I'm asking, will this be tabled until that opinion comes back?
I haven't, so you're now, um?
Yeah, I am.
Superseding the motion and second to, uh?
I'm clarifying it.
If, if you're moving to table, that does take precedence, so I guess just need to clarify.
Yeah, well, well, my first, my, my motion, if, if, Mr. City Attorney, if it's okay, I'd like to make the motion that we refer to the attorney general and that this matter be, uh, stayed, put on hold, tabled, whatever would be the appropriate terminology, until the AG opinion can come back. And, and I don't know the best way to legally do that.
So the action is not to table this immediately for tonight's agenda, it's to refer this to the attorney general with an action that would not, now I'm hearing, uh, not allow, um, action to go forward on the, on the ordinance as listed. Is, am I hearing that correctly?
That was my understanding, Mr. Mayor. The procedurally, because tonight was a second reading, um, if, if you don't act, uh, if we don't continue it to a date certain, uh, and keep the notice alive in effect, we would have to, um, start over most likely with an introduction and adoption at least five days later on. We, we talk about first and second reading, it's, it's really introduction at one meeting, and then you're prohibited from passing it until at least five days have passed, so that's, in effect, you have two meetings. They can be five days apart, but typically they're two weeks apart at least.
So again, as I understand, the motion that's been made and seconded is to refer, um, the issues on the, uh, freedom of speech and other issues, for lack of a better word, to the attorney general, uh, which would preclude further action tonight or second reading on this ordinance. Is that close?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Any further discussion or action?
Yes, I, I would like to move to table Mr. Ziprick's motion until after consideration of the main subject of this agenda item.
I'll second that.
Move to table takes precedent. The only issue if we start tabling narrow, specific aspects of this, it becomes, uh, procedurally difficult.
Well, what I was saying, what I was saying is I'm tabling his action so that we can consider it after consideration of the main motion, the main, the main, uh, subject of the, of the agenda item. In other words, I'm, I'm trying to use a parliamentary maneuver to prevent Mr. Ziprick from, from tabling the primary motion.
May I ask indulgence, uh, of both, uh, speakers to just simply take a vote on, uh, Mr. Ziprick's, uh, action that was moved and seconded, and then, uh, move forward?
No, I'm going ahead with a tabling motion, and it, and it's been seconded.
The action to be tabled is, uh, related specifically to, uh, just the provision of, uh, going to the attorney general, uh?
No, it's the entire, his entire motion. And- And the reason, the reason for, and I'll, and I'll say that, you know, I don't personally have any opposition to going to the Attorney General, I just don't think it should delay this action, that's what I'm saying.
Please.
Because it's a second reading.
Advice from City Attorney, rest of the council, I am not a world-class parliamentarian, it's a little bit of a-
You're becoming one.
-division of tabling a portion of the action and just a narrow interpretation. I, I guess it seems like that could be done, I'd rather do it differently, but.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't pretend to be an expert parliamentarian. In fact, we don't adopt strict Roberts Rules of Orders or any other specific handbook as a council or city. And so there's a certain amount of discretion with the chair on this. I would, I would say, if, if my opinion were asked, with all due respect, I, I was hearing what I took to be a motion to table, a motion to table, and I'm not sure that's appropriate. That would be for the chair to determine.
He could decide.
Lot of help you are.
Okay, then, then does my motion to table, the motion to table signal that this, that his motion could come up after the main issue is decided?
Well, I think that if Councilman Ziprick's motion is heard first, he could renew that motion to refer the matter to the AG later, so the effect would be the same.
I agree.
Again, I've indicated my preference, but hearing clearly an action to table something, as I understand it, that probably does take preference, even though I don't like dividing up the main motion on that, but since I'm hearing no other-
Can I, can I make another parliamentary argument?
You can make any arguments you wish.
Can you table a motion that's not been moved?
That's part of the issue we had, your tabling refers simply to a motion second on an action that I believe was given us.
It was.
Yeah, but I'm saying that he's tabling something that has not been moved.
My understanding of his action was not technically to table, sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was to simply pass an action that would in essence make any further action moot going forward with the proposed action, so again, I shouldn't be-
If his action is not a tabling, then my motion takes precedence.
Well, you know, if, if you kind of want to have the last table, I don't know how to fight that. What I was hoping to do was get a reading from the AG as to legality of one key provision here. And I don't really favor the idea of passing a law until we know it's legal.
I, I hate playing parliamentary games. I will be perfectly blunt, but you have made a action with a specific language to table, it's been seconded, please restate that.
I move to table Mr. Ziprick's motion, which does not contain a legal tabling or an authorized tabling, because there's absolutely no motion on the table, no, nothing for him to table. So what I'm saying is I'm tabling his motion so that we can consider the primary subject of this agenda item, so that we can consider Mr. Ziprick's motion to refer to the Attorney General after passage or, well, if it's denied after passage of this ordinance.
I'm entertaining that, entertaining that based on all advice as a motion to table and that will take precedence. Is there a second?
I second that.
I will call for the question, all in favor of the action to table as has been delineated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No. That has not been tabled, we have a motion and second on the floor that I would like to ask for a vote on unless there's further clarification that's needed, again, related to referral to Attorney General, as I interpret it, that would in essence make moving forward on our current ordinance moot. If it's acceptable to the council, I will call for a vote on that.
I just wanted to make a quick statement. Referring some to the Attorney General does not require council vote, I think, nothing prevents any one of us of asking the city attorney to write a letter, asking for clarification. Nothing prevented me from calling the FPPC and talking to their attorneys about my legal standing and particular procedures. So I'm not sure that necessarily having us vote as a body to send to Attorney General is any more powerful than you writing a letter to him or asking the city attorney to do so. I just, I'm, I'm reluctant to support sending a request to the Attorney General and only be delayed and wait months and months and months to decide what he or may not decide when he comes back to us. Once again, this is, this is an ordinance that was adopted in another city. It, it has so far proven to be of legal standing.
Problematical, according to the press report up there.
That may be the case. It's like Mayor Brower said, if we have issues and we're unhappy to amend it-
I've already raised the issues. I read the San Jose Mercury News, they, the attorney, the district attorney up there said they could not prosecute under this law because of the awkward language in it. I mean, I've read that. So I'm telling you, there's a problem right now.
That's one person's opinion.
I think, I think we've generated extensive discussion and if there's no overwhelming objection by the council, I would like to ask for a vote on Councilman Ziprick's motion that was seconded by Councilman Peterson. Is anyone unsure of what that is or do we need further clarification?
Can I try another, can I try another maneuver?
I would personally rather take a vote on this and then move forward with further action based on that.
Can I ask the mayor whether or not-
You can ask anything.
-whether he would like the option of voting on the second hearing, voting on the council bill without having to send it to the Attorney General first?
I have no problem sending it to the Attorney General, not sending it to the Attorney General, as long as we don't preclude taking some action this evening on the particular ordinance. My intent would be if we vote the action that has been mentioned, obviously it stops moving forward tonight, that will end the discussion. If that ends up being voted down, then potentially we could pass the ordinance as listed, we could pass the ordinance and ask for opinion from Attorney General. That's up to the council. If no further discussion, I would like to call for a vote then on the action that's been moved and seconded by Mr. Ziprick and Peterson. Are there any further clarifications or are we sort of clear?
So clarification, a no vote on his motion would open up the option of bringing back after passage of the bill, referral to the Attorney General.
Unless the city attorney feels differently as chair, I see no reason it would preclude that kind of action.
I, I agree with you. I mean, if, if you vote this down, then you can proceed.
I will call for a vote on the motion that's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It defeated three-two, I'm ready for any other action.
This requires a roll call vote, do we need to waive the reading? I make a motion that we waive-
If the intent is to pass this, that would be the next step to a call for second reading by roll call vote and waive the reading with the city clerk.
I make a motion that we waive the reading for council bill 0200-911.
Second.
And that includes the clarification as listed by the city attorney on that purpose section C.
That's correct.
Making that clear with that clarification. That action to take second reading, call for roll call vote, has been moved and seconded, further discussion? If not, oh, sorry.
I just want the public to be perfectly clear on one item. And that is that this ordinance does not prevent current or former city council members from benefiting financially from their positions on city council. It does not prevent that. It only prevents it from happening in this city.
Fair enough.
So the public is clear about that. This does not prevent public officials from benefiting from their position financially. It does not prevent that.
Action's been moved and seconded for second reading, roll call only, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Three-two. Madam Clerk, roll call, read by title.
It is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Adding Chapter 2.52 of Title II of the Loma Linda Municipal Code to Adopt the City of Loma Linda Revolving Door Ordinance." And you may vote.
I'll make sure we have the right.
It's hard to read these things.
It's hard to read, so the no vote is which?
The middle one.
The middle one? Okay.
The secret ballot.
All right. Secret ballot, fine.
There's no secret ballot.
Passes three.
Light sword. I heard some potential indication of also an action to officially refer this to the Attorney General for his opinion.
All seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Are we clear enough on the clauses? And I'm sure Attorney Ziprick and Halliday can clarify that. I think we've indicated the general consensus of what issues related to some of the free speech and so on.
And I'm, I'm understanding that the clause, private for-profit business, that was taken out.
Yes, I tried to-
Correct. Those two words were removed.
...state that, make abundantly clear, just in the purpose, there's no distinction made between profit and for-profit entity or whatever language the city attorney thinks is better, but that was my understanding.
Yes, my understanding was that the two words, for-profit, were deleted. And that was simply to be consistent with the subsequent effective language.
Correct.
It's probably clearer than adding nonprofit to it, same net result. We've had a motion, an action moved and seconded to refer item to Attorney General. Any further discussion?
Just brief comment, I, I don't believe that we need to refer every single law that we pass to the Attorney General, although we have the right to do so. I don't believe that we need to have a council vote on it. I think Mrs. Ziprick can clearly write a letter to the Attorney General, can also direct Mr. Halliday to do so. I'm a little reluctant to increase legal fees by trying to, I know Mr. Halliday may not mind the extra work, but nevertheless, I'm, I'm not sure that much is to be gained from it. I think it's always a good idea to get information from other legal sources, but I think in this particular case, it wasn't done, I don't believe for concern, but rather to try to delay the process. But nevertheless, I don't necessarily see a problem if all we're doing is getting someone's opinion for it, I'm just not sure that we need a council vote for it, that's all.
Mr. Councilman Ziprick?
I'd like to encourage my good colleagues to all support this. I think we're all interested in following the law and I think it might be helpful to get that opinion. I, I suspect that a little wisdom now from the AG's office will save a lot of grief and trouble later. And I think that the price of liberty is well worth defending.
Are we ready for vote?
Just curious, if, are you only stopping at Attorney General for the state of California or you want to go further to the US Attorney?
No.
Because it's a constitutional issue, so is it, are we violating the US-
Ovi, Ovi.
-constitution or the California constitution?
You out, shout sometimes. I just want to go to California's.
We have a action moved and seconded, all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to make one, I just want to make one comment. I, I voted for the ordinance because I do believe that it's not unconstitutional, but I'm willing to accept a referral to someone who might have better legal judgment than I do.
All in favor of the ordinance, or ordinance? The action, you can ask another question.
Clarification, Mr. Ziprick, you want us to refer to the Attorney General, that specific portion of the ordinance that refers not for compensation, to see if it violates any state law? Is that what you're asking us to send his opinion for?
Getting his opinion as to whether it's constitutional.
The whole law or just a portion of it?
No, just, we could send the whole law, but basically, the only part I was, was raising a question on was that constitutional part.
Okay, that's fine, that's all.
No further comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We will take a six-minute break, reconvene at ten after, have no idea whether we can finish in fifteen minutes, but based on previous history, it may be considerably longer, we'd better take a six-minute break. See you at ten after.
Please, thank you.
If I was right, we're just not in the county's budget, not for bus transport. Right, and, excuse me, left now, and just so you know, there's three properties, Barton Road, Barton Road, these are two of the university ones, everything else, the bus stop, just statistical amount, right? So, yeah, so anyway, we're trying to do it right, and then the park right across the street, and that will go about.
The constitutional issue.
Yeah, you're right.
That was it.
Thirty seconds. I would like to call council back to order. After a brief recess, I believe we left off with the consent calendar. Have a number of items, just highlight one or two, exciting, seems like every meeting. We have some more street improvements, authorized the rest of Barton Road at our last meeting. Now have some action awarding a contract on Evans Street, Alameda's Drive, Stewart Street, and as well as the additional items on here. So, anyway, looking for an action, item number fifteen has been pulled from the consent calendar. Anything else?
I need to abstain on item fourteen because it's within the limit of my residence, I think five hundred feet, so.
And I would like to pull item number fourteen for discussion.
Fourteen and fifteen, I believe, have been pulled. Anything else to pull from the consent calendar? Hearing nothing else to be, you pulled the rest of the consent calendar, except items fourteen and fifteen have been moved and seconded. Any opposition to that part of the consent calendar? Seeing none, that's approved, item fourteen.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, as you were a couple of years ago, I came, asked the historical committees and the city council if we can sell the Allen Breaker State. It's a house that locate on Allen Way to the south, on the south side of Allen Way, and we also gained an approval for us to subdivide part of the land, so that it's about two acre, it's still attached to the house, and the rest is being attached to the Hodor Crooks Park. We have an appraiser went out to appraise the property, and he recommended that if we paint the house and replace the carpet, we should get a better price.
I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney, I don't think I have any property close enough, but I'm going to just be an abundance of caution to, since I haven't measured with a, with any measuring device, I am going to recuse myself, turn this over to Councilman Riggs, or Mayor Protim Riggs.
So, and the reason for that is, is, you know, we, for what I was told, the city used the park development fee to purchase this land, and so I would like to be able to sell this house and use that money to improve other park facility, and what is including also the Heritage Park and other park facility, that's kind of in my conclusion.
Mr. Popescu.
Well, a couple of issues. One is, it appears as if the staff was directed by city council prior to this last city seating, in other words, prior to the most recent elections. Can anybody clarify that for me? I don't recall actually approving or directing staff to sell this particular piece of land. I just want to get that clarification.
Not this particular.
Okay, so it happened prior to me coming up?
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. Okay, well, nobody seems to know, but nevertheless, I just want to make sure that it's very clear that this decision that was made part.
Let me, let me, let me go back and check the record, but at one time, to get direction that we should get the property appraised.
Okay, that's fine. The other question I have, and I just heard it from the first time tonight, is that the proceeds from this land could only be used in the park fund and nothing else. It doesn't go to the general fund?
Correct.
For any other uses, okay.
Correct, because, correct me if I'm wrong, because we use the park development fee money to purchase this house, so the proceed will go back to the same.
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear. The staff has been directed to sell this land after it was subdivided, two acres of it remains as Hodor Crooks Park, and the other two acres remain as part of the properties. Is that what I just overheard you say? Okay. My only concern, I think the idea is good of trying to sell land in order to generate money that can be used for other park space. I'm very much in favor of that. I think we can always use more money in the park spaces. Many of you know, we're trying to put in as much as sixty acres of open space and park space and citrus preservation down off of Mission and Relent's Boulevard, and even though the city owns a fair amount of land there, we don't own enough to put some of it as park space. So, we may have to purchase more land in order to save more of the orange trees and things like that. My only concern is that attempting to sell this particular land in this market may not necessarily be the best idea. Obviously, we all agree that the housing market is, you know, pretty low. There's opinion out there that it might get even lower. I happen to be one of those that actually believes that, and I'm not sure whether discussing the sale of this land or not is really appropriate for this particular item or not, and I want to make sure I'm clear with the city attorney. I know all we're discussing is the appropriations of funds to improve the house for the eventual sale. My only contention is that I think that we may want to rethink whether we want to sell this particular property at this time, and if we have to rethink that, then we may want to consider rethinking spending money to improve it at this time. But that's kind of my concern at this point, and I'm not sure whether the three of us here can decide on our own that it's in the city's best interest not to place this property for sale at this time.
The challenge I have is the longer we wait, we end up costing more money to renovate the house, for example. We spend a lot of money fixing electrical, we have rat problems, and also bees problem, and we keep on spending more money to keep up the house.
So, there's nobody living in the house right now?
No, it's vacant, and stop people from vandalizing.
Okay, and if we fixed it up, could we actually rent it and receive income from it as a city?
Yeah.
Okay. My main concern is, once again, is I just don't think we should be selling it at this time.
I don't think this is a motion to sell. I think this is a motion to repair, and then that would prepare it for appraisal and decision of whether it would be something we would want to sell or to rent, and it would give us options in the future. I don't think we're locking it into anything.
I would agree, but if you look at the staff report, city council directed staff to dispose of Allen Breaker State as excess property. So, if we approve fixing it up, there's nothing preventing from staff from going out there and attempting to sell it. I know ultimately, it'll come back to us to approve, I agree with you, but I still think that it doesn't make sense for us to go out there and actively sell it if we decided that's not really what we want to do. Do you follow?
I will come back to you when we find out how much the property's appraised, to see if, hey, are you happy with half, half million dollars?
Okay, I understand.
Two hundred thousand dollar, and we're willing to sell that for that price, and if you say no, then we don't sell the property.
Okay, is there?
If I might insert for Councilman Popescu's background on this issue. Both the historical and parks committees worked together to put together a set of recommendations to the city council, and they were both, both committees were in agreement that the property was not reaching its full potential in city hands, and that it was draining city coffers and repairs, and that it is a liability sitting vacant. And I know that both committees feel that there are, this is not a house that you would just put up for sale and people would come and look at it. This is, this is a house that anybody interested in buying it would probably be someone who has a great love for historic preservation, and hopefully the money to back it up, because it's definitely going to be.
Do you happen to know when those committees made the recommendations? How long ago?
You know, this is December of two thousand nine. It seems to me that it was in two thousand seven.
At the height of the real estate market. Would you sound like a great idea then?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
But they, we have discussed it at both committees in the last year, just revisiting the issue because they wanted to know what the staff said.
Update, I understand.
And they seem to still be supportive of the, of the whole idea of selling it.
Well, I have no problem with, you know, fixing it up at this point, and the decision to sell it obviously is going to be made. I'm just reluctant to have the city initiate the process of hiring a real estate agent and all that when we may decide that that's not really what we want to do. So, that's all.
Yes, I'd be happy to come back to you after we have an appraisal.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion, any opposition? It passes, the other councilman can return. Item fifteen.
Let's see, we left off item fourteen, so we're ready to address item fifteen. Is that correct, our meeting schedule?
We have two meetings scheduled in January, and I don't know the dates, second and fourth Tuesday, is it?
The meeting dates would be January twelve and January twenty-sixth.
Unfortunately, I have an, a very difficult assignment during the month of January. I will be teaching a class in Hawaii and in Guam, and so I would miss, the way the meetings are scheduled at the moment, I will miss both meetings. If we move the, if we can move one meeting to the first Tuesday in January, I would be able to be here because I'm not leaving until Thursday of that week. So, I would only have to miss one meeting instead of two.
Would that work for staff or council?
So, that makes it for the fifth, is that what you think would help? You'd be here for the fifth? Okay, I see no problem changing it to the fifth, unless someone else has an issue.
Staff, is that, is that okay with the department head, city clerk, city manager? Okay, I think it'll work for me. I don't have my calendar, but hey, let's go for it. So, January, January fifth instead of twelfth. Any other changes?
I have questions about why we would be here instead of at some celebration party on June eight.
What's June eight?
Election day.
Oh, we're moving to June eight, I'm sorry. I thought you were still talking about January.
Do we want to?
That seems like an odd day to have a city council meeting.
I think we should move it to a week before or a week after.
We might actually suppress the vote because people will be riveted to the TV at seven, and they can vote till eight.
Maybe we'll shorten our council meeting.
You're in charge, remember?
Consensus account of council, what would you like to do with June eight meeting?
I'd like to cancel that one.
I guess we always have the right to add a meeting as needed, but we could leave it off our official calendar as of this point, so if there's a consensus, we will remove June eight from official noticed meeting day, but again, as second Tuesday are standing potential meeting dates, so we can add that as necessary. Would that be acceptable, Madam Clerk?
That's fine with me.
Any other dates? There's some that I, I have one meeting in October I go to every year in my professional society, and I failed to check the dates on that, but I guess we can look at that hopefully in another month or two, if that's a problem. Any other issues or dates with those two changes? Shall we?
I move the calendar then.
Move calendar with those two changes? Second, do I hear? Second. Any opposed? Passes as mentioned. Alrighty, on to old business, item nineteen, related to the settlement agreement with Save Loma Linda, and Councilman Ziprick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The issue here that I'd like to bring up is, there was a comment at the end of the last meeting that our good Mayor Protim brought up, which was similar to what was in the newspaper, and it was that the settlement, the implication was a settlement met that the city had in some sense lost. And there was a dialogue, I know, between Mayor Protim and Councilmember Peterson on that point. Some of us heard it and were concerned about the fact that even though the settlement agreement itself said that it was not an admission of any guilt on the part of the city, any wrongdoing on the part of the city, any error on the part of the city, and Dusty, if you want to respond to it, be fair.
I don't, I don't recall saying that. It's not a big deal to me, I don't.
The.
So, what was, what was, remind me of the context.
Okay, the context was, Councilmember Peterson brought up a statement, and we were getting into a discussion, it was after the original discussion, and you said, the implication of your comment was it means something, the fact that there was a settlement, it means something. And the implication, and you actually went a little further than this, as I understood it, was that it meant that the city had admitted some sort of culpability or some sort of wrongdoing in the settlement, by settling the case with Save Loma Linda.
No, actually, what I meant, and I guess we'll have to check the tapes, but I don't recall the implication you're referring to, and implications are in the eye of the beholder, I admit, but what I intended to say was that throughout the course of the, of the litigation, multiple of their contentions were incorporated into the eventual general plan, which was, to my eye, an acquiescence to some of their former demands, but then became moot and were no longer demands, and in this, of course, in a settlement, you don't admit any kind of defeat or culpability, because that's what a settlement's all about. So, does that clarify?
Well, yes, and see, one of the points that have been brought up by somebody was the fact that the EIR did not change in the settlement. There are a number of citizens who have tried to understand why the city went into a settlement, and the official line has been, it was tactical. The decision sometimes is made in a case for tactical reasons, attorney's fees, whatever. It doesn't mean any wrongdoing. In fact, you may have a very strong position and say, to save attorney's fees, we're going to settle. The implication was, what I heard you saying was, no, there is an inference where the city would not have settled, and that's what I heard you saying.
And if that inference was received, I, I retract or disavow that kind of implication. Because I don't, you know, I don't think. Because I don't, you know, I don't think the city did anything wrong at the time of the settlement. You, you decide to settle because of tactical reasons. Now, now whether or not the city was adjudged wrong is moot because several of their contentions were, were accommodated in the eventual general plan. So I don't know why we even need to contest that or argue over the, over the culpability of the city.
Because you brought it up. And there was also the letter to the editor that I put on the screen at the last meeting in which a person said, if the council knew the whole time that the city was in the wrong, they ought to pay for the settlement and the cost of litigation out of their own pockets. That's what the letter to the editor said and you saw it with everybody else.
Yeah, I very much disagree with that statement.
Okay, but because that statement was made and then I, the statement I heard you make said, okay, there is a real danger that the public could think that there is an implied admission in any part. And I, I spent time talking to staff during the case and polled them because I felt we had a defensible case. And that was where I was. And when I heard that other comment made, and Mr. Peterson, I know you were, you were here, sitting here because you were the one that was in the dialogue with the Mayor Protam. Am I misunderstanding what was said?
Yeah, that was exactly, the words, I can't repeat them exactly. Well, that must be an admission of guilt.
Well, what I can tell you now is that because several of their contentions were acquiesced to in the process of developing the, the general plan, that that indicates that some of the things that they wanted were amenable to the city. Whether that implies guilt, I seriously doubt because I don't think it was a, I don't think it was a criminal proceeding.
No, it's not a criminal proceeding, but in a political sense, when, what happens is something may be on paper and then someone can say after the fact, but you know what this really means. And the way I took it was, what you were saying is, hey, let me tell you what it really means, the city was in the wrong. And I thought that is, is, if you didn't mean that, then I wanted to clarify that. If you did mean it, we need to clarify that.
I don't, I don't personally think that right and wrong are the, are the correct words for it because there are lots of opinions on how to handle things and general plans can go any which direction. And I certainly wasn't a party to the, to the prosecution of that case. I felt that the lawsuit was, was, as far as I was concerned, mooted by a lot of political activity. And that political activity showed that the citizens of the, of the city favored a certain direction. It just, just didn't happen to be along the lines of what some of the former council majority wanted. So, to me, that made the lawsuit gradually, gradually less of an issue. And you can see that because you look at the changes that we did to the general plan. The general plan gradually changed. And it changed to something that was more in line with what the initial complaint was about. So, you know, I don't call that guilt, I don't call it wrong. I call it just changes of opinion and politics changes city direction.
Now, it's funny how subtleties can make a difference because I believe the lawsuit was over the environmental impact report.
Well, the environmental, if, if you look at the final settlement, the environmental impact report didn't change.
Right, yet that's what the case was about.
But, but do we have to reveal the private discussions to say why?
Well, see, part of, part of the reason...
What's the opinion of the, of the city attorney on that?
Feel free to ask.
Well, as far as any closed session or attorney-client privileges, you recall my opinion is that we should not go into those or waive those privileges at this time or, or generally in any such case. So the, what's in the public record is in the public record. And I think I summarized early on the reasons for the settlement as part of resolving an expensive litigation and the fact that in all litigation, there are risks and issues that cannot be fully predicted. And that's why settlements occur in general. In this case, the council was advised and acted in the best interests of the city in good faith. And I don't think I can really add more than that.
Let me share something with you though, Mayor Protam. The very same city that modeled the ordinance that was just passed earlier tonight also considered recently another ordinance called the Sunshine Ordinance. And what it proposes is that all closed sessions be tape recorded and as soon as the statute runs, the tapes be released in full, that there be cameras in every part of City Hall and every meeting be recorded. So it's totally open. And that, that's something, that's really along the line of the ordinance we talked about earlier. That's where San Jose has considered going.
Is, is that an agendized item?
No, but I'm just telling you that when we're talking about closed session, one city has considered eliminating closed sessions after a certain period of time by recording and revealing everything that happened in closed session.
Well, then I, I, you can bring that forward as, as an ordinance in the future and, and...
We'll see how far it gets.
Well, to, to my eye, if you have a closed session with the intent of opening it later, it's going to result in different closed sessions.
That's exactly right. So, that was...
But doing it after the fact is a little bit chilling.
Well, well, it would reveal to the public what happened.
It was, it's chilling.
Yeah, as I was bringing up earlier.
I don't get that connection.
Councilman Peterson?
On this issue, Mr. Attorney, can you just remind me, the, the lawsuit that resulted in this agreement, the settlement agreement, was that lawsuit strictly restricted to the EIR?
Well, I don't have that in front of me. I'm trying to recall at this hour. The focus certainly was the EIR. The, the reason why many of the issues that were raised in the litigation had to do with the general plan and the application of Measure B to the general plan, which was a large part of what the update to the general plan was, was all about. And so that, that was a large part of the discussion in the litigation. And the court specifically had continued the case repeatedly while the general plan update, including the, the additional environmental review was going on. So there was some connection there.
But if, if the lawsuit itself strictly applied to the EIR and there was no change to the EIR and this council voted unanimously to continue that same EIR, then certainly the public would have a right to question what was gained by the lawsuit and the settlement if there was no change to what the lawsuit originally alleged.
There was an addendum to the EIR that was done as part of the update to the general plan. And as part of that, the city and the court proceedings had argued that many of the issues had become moot. And that was part of the defense that's in the public record. But without the entire file in front of me, I can't comment any more specifically.
Well, I think, I think the point is that an addendum to the EIR is an equivalent to a new EIR of a different form.
Not exactly. It builds on the foundation of the original EIR.
But it's an addendum to it. It's a change.
Well, well, just a minute, that's not quite correct. When, when I had talked with staff before, I'll ask the city manager, during the case, Mr. City Manager, you were in a different role, but I know I checked with you and other members of the staff on whether we had a good defense. And my understanding was we had a very strong case. Is that a fair statement? We did not feel we did, we're doing anything wrong. I'm sorry, putting you on the spot.
Is this getting into closed session?
Well...
No, this is outside closed session.
Why?
Yeah, the city hired excellent attorneys and the briefs and arguments of those attorneys are in the public record. And it is fair to say that we felt that we had good defenses. But the outcome of a trial ultimately can never be predicted by either side. And settlements are frequently in the best interests of both sides.
But you can't, you can't go from there and say that there was an implied acquiescence or, I think the term you used last meeting was capitulation. That was the exact word you used.
That would be acquiescence in another root language, yes.
I heard you use capitulation now that I think back.
Mm-hmm. It sounds like my word.
Yeah, but it was not a capitulation, Mr. Mayor Protam.
So to incorporate some of their initial contentions in our eventual general plan? What was it?
That, that, see, that is the point, is if you're now saying, no, I'm going to go back and reverse myself and say, we did prevail, then we have an issue. If you say, no, there was no argument that this was a prevailing, that is pretty crucial and the public has an interest in that. And are you saying there was a capitulation or you were drawing that term?
What I'm saying is that, what I'm saying is that the city's alignment with the initial desires of the lawsuit became gradually more and more, more aligned. You can call it a capitulation, you can call it acquiescence, you can call it, that's just what we wanted to do anyway, whatever you want to call it.
Then that becomes an issue.
Why?
Because it wasn't a capitulation.
Why?
Because you're trying to turn it into a political victory where there was supposed to be...
Who's playing politics here?
You are. Because you used the term capitulation.
Please, with a P-U-H at the, at the start, please.
You're the one who used the term...
Who's making hay? Who's on a hayride tonight?
You are.
Any further comments?
I would only want to add that anybody who's, like Mr. City Attorney alluded earlier, anybody who has further questions, I think that, you know, we want to be an open government where people understand that this is what we're making while we're making it. And I think that anybody's free in the audience who's really concerned about this and really wants to know what happened. We hired very good attorneys. They filed legal briefs where they clearly stated what the city's position was in reference to the lawsuit. I think they're more than welcome to go to the courthouse and get copies of that. In fact, we may even have copies of it. They can read the settlement agreement that really goes through very good detail as to all that transpired over a period of time and what was actually settled on. They can look at the minutes, the public hearings of the general plan. They can get copies of the drafts of the general plan as it went through process. This is a process that started many years ago. Mr. Peterson may allude to it, even in Mr. Brower, they were here for a long time. There were a lot of process involved. There's lots of staff reports, there's copies of letters filed by the attorneys from Save Law Melinda explaining their concerns with what was being passed in the EIR. There's copies of the ninety-six initiative, which was a great deal of contention. I think anybody can read those and clearly see for themselves. I think that, as Mr. Ziprick said, that there is a political ramification here. And I think Mrs. Kathy Glendridge clearly stated, they, their position was that they felt they were going to win. The position of the city was that we felt we were going to win, but yet for whatever reason, the city decided to settle. I think that it's going to be up to the voters to decide if they go through all this information and decide for themselves that those individuals make the best decision on behalf of the city. Some may agree with you, some may agree with us, some of it may not. And I think we all suffer the consequences of that. So I, I think that there's plenty of information out there for the public and I'm not sure there's really this confusion of, you know, some, you know, discussion that people are not privy to. I think people can clearly look at a record that's available for everybody to see as to everything that transpired. The general plan that was passed, the EIR, the lawsuit itself going point by point as to all the things they alleged, the city's defense as to why, how they countered that, the letters back and forth. There's a great deal of record for anybody to see. They can request it from our city clerk and it's available for anyone. So I'm not sure what's the point of continuing to discuss it over and over again. This is the fourth time we've discussed this, so...
I'm, I'm amused that I'm the one making politics out of it. And it says Councilman Ziprick agendized this item.
Yes, in response to a comment you made at the end of the last meeting that it was a capitulation. And I wanted to address that because it was not.
To me, the politics that resulted in said capitulation were before the settlement and the elections preceding the settlement. That's where the, where the politics shifted in this town.
That's not what you were saying. You were saying at the end of the last meeting, as I understood it, that the settlement was a capitulation.
No. The general plan...
I'll go back and listen to the tape. That's what I heard you say.
Was, was, the general plan was a gradual agreement with a lot of the stuff that used to be in the lawsuit was no longer in the lawsuit at the time of the settlement. How could, how could, you, that's what I mean. And I'm not one to misrepresent what I mean, I'm fairly proud of it.
Well, I know what I heard you saying and I thought for the record, the public should hear that what you were saying is different from the official record and that the city staff and, and council in the settlement had said...
I will, I will grant to council.
Well, let me finish. Had said, we are not capitulating and you were taking a position last week, last council, just to the opposite of that.
I will grant to Mr. Ziprick that I am occasionally inartful in my communication, but I can tell you that the settlement was not a capitulation. The general plan was a gradual political process of alignment with some of the prior goals of the lawsuit. The politics of this town aligned themselves with some of the prior goals of that lawsuit from what I saw. And that mooted a lot of issues. Call it capitulation, call it whatever you want. That's what it was.
That's, that's a different answer than what I thought I heard you saying last time. All right.
Well, that is my answer.
All right.
What you thought I heard was, what you thought you heard was not what I intended to convey.
All right.
Any further comments on this item? If not, next item, item twenty, red light enforcement program. Again, mentioned briefly, item one A on our closed session. We started our agenda this evening with potential litigation. Again, just to be clear, that was the issue and only issue we discussed in closed session due to the potential litigation of certain action is chosen and what some of the litigation potentials may be. City attorney advised us related to potential legal angles. Now, we obviously are moving the rest of the discussion to open session as far as specific directions related to either continuing, either attempting to terminate agreement or letting it run its natural course over the next approximately one year. So with that as a very brief background, I don't know whether Mr. City Attorney has anything further we'd like to add to introduce this item, but we'll at least give him the opportunity if he chooses to start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a lot to say other than if the council chooses, you may give direction to have staff continue to discuss the status of the agreement. You noted that it will expire approximately a year from now if we do nothing other than choose to let it expire. If the council wants to consider an extension, we could inquire as to terms for an extension. Those, any extension could include modifications to the current contract. So the, the contract could be renewed fairly soon with different terms than are currently in effect. in effect. So we'll take your direction on that.
Would like to open this to discussion with the council as far as, again, not sure we need formal action, but we certainly need to indicate direction to city staff with, where we will take further direction and potentially negotiations or moving toward termination, toward extension, toward natural death of the contract. Councilman Ziprick?
Mr. Mayor, I, I put it on the agenda because our, our good colleague, I think the Protem had suggested last night putting it in closed session. I thought that, as the city attorney had said, in order to take an action on a contract, whether to not renew or to discuss termination or anything, or whether somebody wanted to renew it, it needed to be done in an open session. So I put it on as a placeholder, not to, not to control the discussion, but to get it up in front of the whole council. So I'll turn it back to you.
Fair enough. I am open to indications of direction or discussion. Certainly, we had, I think, fairly extensive discussion was at our last meeting or a few meetings before that. In fact, I think several meetings we have and we've had further report from the sheriff with various statistics and information. We've all waded through those issues. We, at the last meeting, talked about extending, as advocated by Mayor Protem, the yellow light timing, which has been done on those intersections as I understand it. I'll just, you know, briefly add, and attempting to research things myself, seems like consensus of, of studies I can find and so forth is probably the greatest safety is with combination of extending the yellow light, some red light cameras and seeing figures with ninety-some percent reduction in accidents. But, you know, again, the studies aren't conclusive, they aren't uniform and probably better, I, and I chide myself, probably better stay away from a full discussion of that. We've all weighed it into our opinions. Again, looking tonight, what direction do we want to go? Termination, natural death, extension, combination?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, the, the contract has a year to run and, and it is, is, is a five-year contract. And if you're looking for a motion, I would move that we simply let this thing run to its logical end, you know, and that's another year for us to decide yet when we get down near the end whether we want to extend it or not. We don't, we wouldn't, there's no, there's no reason why we have to decide tonight whether we're going to extend it or not. I mean, that's, wait, wait till we get down at the end. I, I will add that I am becoming increasingly disconcerted. I think that the red light cameras, the whole idea, I think, is a very good idea. I know, as I've said before, that I'm a much safer driver now than I was before they went in. However, now I understand the fines have gone up to four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which is absolute, I mean, that's crazy. That's just what the state is. Whoever is setting these fines, what they're doing is they're taking a very good idea and they're making it totally unworkable and, and almost ridiculous. And I think that's where we're going here, so I'm-
I now have a seven hundred and sixty dollar judgment I got in the mail yesterday on a car that I sold this last summer that I have been attempting to explain that I was no longer the owner or the driver, but I have now been turned over to a collection agency. So it's a fun process sometimes.
So, I mean, yeah, so, you know, let's sing, let's see what happens down the road and we run out of time here.
I'll second his motion.
I, I guess I, I wasn't even going to entertain official motions, but I hear two, two individuals indicating in present direction to continue toward either a natural death or possibly later on an extension depending on what transpires, but not to move forward with trying to terminate the contract early.
Point, point of order.
Yes.
Does the status quo require a motion?
I don't believe so. My understanding is we have a contract and that will continue unless we clearly indicate a direction to staff to try and terminate that before it's due to expire.
Mr., Mr. Mayor, if, if, maybe I should go after the Mayor Protem unless you had a immediate point you wanted to make. Okay, I'll, I'll throw an idea out. I've talked to a number of people around town and, and also talked to some people outside the city, around the courthouse, been observing some situations down there. And it seems to me that what the comments of, of Councilmember Peterson, they're fairly accurate because the thing has gone to excess. The other problem is that the large volume of tickets seems to be by common consensus, now right-hand turns. And I, I've had a number of people say to me that they, they don't like the idea of people running red lights. I don't think any of us condone people running red lights flat out like we saw in some of the pictures. But the problem is, is that's not what this seems to be going toward now as much. It seems to be becoming something, it's not the city's goal to make revenue off of it. Ours was always safety, but it's turned into something else and so from that standpoint, I would prefer to see this, this die a death when the contract expires. But I'd like to throw one other thing in, and I don't know if the maker of the motion would go along with it, is that we approach Red, Red Flex and ask them if they would be amenable to terminating the contract sooner, not, not trying to cause city damages, but negotiate an earlier, if it can be arranged, an earlier termination. If they understand we're not planning to continue, I, I can't say what's going to be the result of that, but I think it'd be worth, if, if that would be acceptable. I don't really have a desire to see them continue the way they're going.
Well, maybe they would like out of it, maybe they're losing money.
Well, that's, that-
They might like out of it, I don't know.
I don't know if they would or not, but I think we ought to try.
Certainly wouldn't hurt to ask them.
I think it'd be okay to ask.
I want to make sure I'm clear. You're actually making a motion that you want to terminate the contract?
Just looking for direction.
Negotiate.
That was my motion last time.
No, no, but you, but in other words, there's a difference. If you give a motion to terminate the contract, you can trigger a breach of contract action. If you negotiate, if you negotiate, it's different.
What happens if they decide that they don't want to terminate it? What's the point?
Well, the, the contract expires at its own terms.
That doesn't require a motion, you can go talk to them anytime. We either decide as a body to terminate it or we decide not to. To negotiate, I'm not sure it's really-
Okay, but your point is that we're, we're having a motion over here that we give an indication to staff, and I'm throwing out to the maker of the motion, not just giving them notice that the intent is to have it expire, but to negotiate earlier termination if possible.
If it's acceptable to the council, I was just looking for direction. Let me see if it's possible, could just parse it up into, again, consensus, number one, just simply, do we choose to give staff direction to attempt to terminate the contract before it reaches its current endpoint?
Well, we have a motion, we have a motion to-
Do you want to treat it as a motion? I guess I originally just think, well, we just try and figure out a consensus, whatever way.
Make a motion.
Okay. So consensus appears to be that we direct staff to negotiate with Red Flex as to possible termination of the contract before it's due to expire.
If it can be negotiated.
I think that was very clear to the motion last time that Mr. Ziprick and I supported, which was direct staff to see if we could terminate Mr. Rixby. And I proposed, which was direct staff to look into terminating the contract. So I'm not sure what's changed except that-
You're welcome to join in this one. It, it, we've gotten more clarification.
What's changed is that we, they have capitulated. Sorry, I just-
No, no, it's not capitulation, it's just agreement with, actually, we've gone for several things, all of us together. We're all for the yellow lights being extended.
I, I want to make sure we're clear.
Yeah.
Agreeing to talk to Red Flex about them agreeing to stop the contract is different than us making a motion that we should stop the contract. It's not the same thing. Those are two different things.
I don't know what you're saying, sorry.
Okay, well, let me clarify. Mr. Rixby made a motion that we direct staff to cut the contract. Mr. Ziprick tabled it, you seconded that table. We tabled until tonight. Tonight, you made a motion that we approach Red Flex.
He did.
Okay, he, actually, his motion was that we let it expire and, until it's done.
And I suggested just now, and I was asking the maker of the motion, would he be willing to add something to it, that we approach Red Flex and see if we could negotiate an earlier termination date. That's not terminating the contract, that's negotiating.
Yeah, well, I-
It's different.
Well, I think it's parsing words, but that's not the same thing as just because you favor to talk to-
You don't like the motion.
Well, I want to make sure it's real clear as to what you're proposing it. But just because you're in favor of talking to them, that in no way indicates that you're in favor of removing them. I think you make a, you need to make it real clear. Is your motion in order for you to remove the red light cameras or to hope that Red Flex decides that it's okay to terminate the contract? Those are two different issues and I want to make sure that everybody's real clear as to what your intentions are. We don't need motions to talk to people. The city attorney can talk to anybody they want at any time. I think it's, we, we have to be very clear to the citizens, just because we make a motion to talk to someone, no way indicates that you're in favor terminating the contract. All you're in favor of is talking to them. That's, all it does is prolong what we've been doing for the last four years, which is people are getting red light tickets that perhaps are deserved or not deserved.
If you don't like the motion, you can vote no.
Again, I indicated upfront, I guess, as prerogative of the chair, I'd rather not make this formal motion. I don't think it's indicated, but let's just indicate directions we're going to go. And certainly, we haven't quite arrived at a consensus, I can tell. I will wade in with my preference. I haven't decided whether I think we should extend the red light or camera program after the contract or not. I don't know. I'd like to explore every single option from early termination to its natural death to potentially extending it depending on what kind of terms and conditions and restrictions, et cetera. I, I would just like to have a, a, a meeting with putting all the cards on the table and see what all the options are. So that's my, my direction.
That would be my, that would be my idea too.
And I, I'm going a little further and telling Red Flex we're not interested in renewing and can we negotiate it coming to an end sooner? But, you know, obviously have to have a majority supporting that, so if we're not ready to do that tonight, at least that's where I am at.
So again, I guess we need to see if we can come up with a direction. I, I believe I'm hearing a majority consensus that the primary direction would like to move is to meet with Red Flex with the primary purpose of negotiating a early end to our contract. I think I'm hearing three express support.
I want to make it clear, I'm not unhappy with the cameras, I'm unhappy with the fine. I, I'm not unhappy with Red Flex or the cameras or the idea of having the cameras there. I'm very unhappy with the fine.
The problem is, we already investigated-
And we don't control the fines.
We can't control the fine. I think we checked, you know, Corona's situation, you know, you can't split the infraction or the misdemeanor into-
I think I'm hearing, council and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have a majority asking staff to go back and negotiate with Red Flex as far as a termination of the contract before it's a natural, natural life. Is that a consensus of the majority?
That's a consensus, but I'm willing to bet that Red Flex is not going to voluntarily get out of it unless we force them to.
Well, you may be right.
I think, I guess in my mind, we need to have that information as to what transpires in that session before I can make a, a decision with the potential litigation that city attorney has discussed with us. So I, I guess at this point, unless the council feels differently, majority is asking council to, to look in or to actively negotiate a early termination of the contract. Is that fair enough?
It's fair, I just want to make it clear that we approached this almost two months ago and I think just, we're just continuing the discussions. I think we made it real clear, we want to terminate these things, we want to terminate them now. It's up to the council to decide whether we want to do that and so far, they decided to keep talking.
I think we're going further than that. We've clearly given staff direction with negotiations and so, you know, I guess we all see things slightly different, but government never moves at the speed I think most of us think it should. That, that I will grant. Any further discussion on that? If not, new business? Any, I guess, nothing listed, so it gets down to reports of councilmen and this one, before we even get into item 21, I believe this potentially could be a new specific item. I don't recall specifically addressing, no pun intended, concrete discussion of a parking structure. So I potentially will have to declare a potential conflict of interest and advise the city attorney. May need to recuse myself.
Can we, can we get a reading from the city attorney on whether this requires recusal or not? Because the university's not involved in this discussion.
Well, I, I think we're at the stage, Mr. Mayor, councilman, where this is an idea that I believe it's Mr. Ziprick would like to perhaps bring forward for some discussion with the university. It's, it's not a, an existing project or plan that I'm aware of. And so if, if the council wants to give staff direction to see if there is an interest in doing that, then obviously that would have to come back at some future date for discussion and action where potential conflicts of interest would have to be addressed. If, if, if there's no objection to having staff look into the issue and report back later, that probably doesn't arise to the level of financial interest in any particular project or application.
City attorney is comfortable with things, I will agree with his advice. However, he always cautions us that we will go to jail, not him, if there's an actual problem, but-
He's not H&R Block. He won't stand up for us.
Councilman Ziprick-
Yeah, I'll go ahead and present what I-
Please, and I-
I'll try not to create a conflict with you.
With that background, will, as Mr. City Attorney, if you feel differently at any point, please join in.
Well, again, this would, there would not be any action taken tonight other than if there's no objection, presumably staff, the city manager could inquire of the university medical center if they're interested in looking into something like this. So there's no decision or preliminary decision or tentative decision or anything arising to that level. It's simply a referral.
It's a discussion, we're not advocating, I want a parking structure built at location X.
No, I'll just-
Fair enough.
Councilman Ziprick, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, sometime back, the Infrastructure Task Force talked in visionary terms of ways to help the community and the task force was made up of representatives of the institutions, business chamber, a couple of us from the council and, and some others. And one of the ideas that was thrown out there and some other places was talking about parking structures and of course, the advantages would be you'd reduce the traffic on the streets because there's stories right now that some people are looking around the institutions for parking for up to a half hour. There's stories of, of, of crowding and that's, in a way, it's good because it's a sign of prosperity when you have people coming here. You want to be catering to them. On the other hand, it's not good long-term if people are discouraged when they try to get here and park. So there's, there's different ways a city and institution can work together and- So there's, there's different ways the city and institution can work together, and one way it could be done that would not hurt the city financially and frankly, would help the institution quite greatly if the city were in a position to do a bond issue of a substantial amount, and the bond were backed up by a contract with a major institution such as the university or medical center or one of the other entities that they have. So there was a cash flow that would pay the bond off. A fairly reasonable arrangement could be worked out that would be substantial enough that would make a real difference in parking on, on campus. You could work out a long-term lease. Some of us are aware that, that leased properties have been part of this community for many years. Medical Center was on leased property for decades. And if you could do that, you might free up capital of the university where, where it would put its capital in things it needs more because it has a different effect on the balance sheet if something is rented as opposed to owned. And that is a legitimate way that, that we could be of a substantial help to the major employer in town and frankly, deal with traffic and parking in one, one effort. Now, that has been thrown out before. I know I talked about it, I think with Dennis in the past, Jarv, we, we talked about it. But it takes an effort to get something like that going, and it takes a lot of time. And with the growth of the campus, the new Centennial building, and there's more buildings planned, I think we all had a chance to learn from some of our recent involvements with folks from the institutions. I think we have a pretty good idea that the growth is in one direction, and it's up. And what we should try to do is get ahead, if we can, in a couple of areas, and I don't have a specific idea where a parking lot would go. I've heard a lot of ideas tossed out. I'm thinking something substantial. And I think we ought to give direction to staff generally that we would like to be supportive of that, and that might help in a lot of contexts. It would be something that would be, I think, legitimate for the city to do and to partner on. And it's substantial enough, it could make a big difference. But it's going to take a lot of work, and I know it falls on staff to do it. We can only vote a policy down the line. I appreciate we have to draw straws down the line. But I'd like to see us take that step of just giving direction and saying we're very serious about it. And that's where it is tonight. It's a concept. We've talked about it before, but I'd like to see us actually seriously approach them and say, really ought to do something on this. And I'm sure this is a five, five, six, seven-year project. It wouldn't surprise me, the way these things go. Okay? That is, that is it.
I'd just make a general comment. It sounds like a good idea. My only concern is that I feel like we're repeating history. Sometime ago, the council wasn't, had a consensus that they would move forward and work with the university on Stewart. The university spent $700,000. When it came down to actually voting for it, the council voted it down. I cannot envision the university feeling that somehow the city is not willing to spend $2 million and work with them on a project that's present, shelf-ready, ready to actually move on, but now we're ready to spend millions of dollars on a parking structure that they may or may not want? I, I'm having a hard time understanding how, on one hand, we don't want to spend $2 million, but on the other hand, we want to go into major debt to create a parking lot that we don't even know where it's at. I just, I'm, I'm finding a hard time understanding how that works. I, I think the university functions very well on its own. I think we, as a council, need to be independent of that. We shouldn't be telling the university where they should be building parking structures, nor should we be in the business of building parking structures and leasing it to university. I don't think that's what our goal is. Our goal is to take care of our citizens. University can take care of itself. There are times when they've approached us several times, we rebuffed them. They wanted a parking lot on Shepherdson, and we rebuffed them then. There's many reasons for that, and I think that played out in the last campaign. So I, I've talked, when I saw this item on the agenda, I've talked to some folks at university, and they said, yeah, we have plans for parking structures, but none of them had any particular plan on the horizon. So I, I'm, I'm a little concerned as to why we're bringing this up at this point.
Let me, let me respond. First of all, the Shepherdson parking lot was eventually approved, as you know, Ovi, with some modifications. And the, so it's, it's really not true to say that there was a rebuff that occurred. That's just factually incorrect. There's a parking lot there today. If it had been disproved, there would not be a parking lot there, right?
I think if you looked up the word rebuff, it would contain-
You used the word rebuff.
A rebuff would contain significant delay within its definition.
No, rebuffing is turning it down. It was approved.
It would, no, it was not approved. The university-
It was approved.
I don't want to argue that particular point. The point I'm trying to make is that we're sending mixed signals when we've had a track record of denying university projects to make political points at certain times. That parking lot, they wanted, I believe, 500 spaces. You denied it. The university said, in exchange for us putting in that parking lot, we're willing to put in a signal that was much needed at Prospect and Benton. I can remember it correctly. I was sitting there in the audience, and you said, we're not going to really approve this, but you go ahead and put in the signal and go for broke. You give it a shot, and maybe we'll approve it later. What you approved was an unpaved parking lot, half the size. Eventually, the university was able to get it paved, but it wasn't the complete parking lot they approved. The, the parking lot that was in front of us was not approved. The point I'm trying to make is that we give mixed signals when we tell the university we want to work with them. They spend lots of money, they offer lots of things, and then we turn around, and when we're not happy with what some of them are doing, we penalize them. And I think it's very clear that this council has done that on several occasions. And so I, I just don't want us to send a mix of telling Jarb to go talk to university because now we're thinking about putting in a bond, and when it comes down to voting for it, someone may decide that, well, maybe if we get a train station, I'll vote for it, but if I don't, I'm not going to vote for it. And that's what I'm afraid we're going down the same path again.
Ovi, the, your, your recollection is not exactly right, and let, let me go through with you what we're talking about here. We're talking about something that was discussed at the Infrastructure Task Force. You were not part of that, I recognize. The issue here is dealing with something that would not be a cash out of the city's pocket. What is different with Stewart Street, and I'm certainly glad you brought it up, there's a difference between the city working out a bond issue with a contract to support the bond issue. It's a concept, and the university hasn't obviously gotten into it yet, and if, if you folks are authorized to speak for the university, so be it. But if you're not, then I think it'd be good for the council to explore if this would be something that would be workable because it is something that would be fair. It's, it's, it would benefit the institution as well as the city. And there can be arguments, if I, if we were to take two hours, we could go through the Shepherdson one, happy to do it, but suffice it to say, there were some things that came up during the reports there where traffic study went from level B, from a level D to a level B, and, and you're not bringing that up. And that's the reason that questions came up. Ultimately, there, there turned out to be a parking lot there. It got modified some, but it wasn't turned down. And this is also looking, is there an area that we could work together on that would be a benefit to both the city and the institution? Now, I'm bringing it up. If there's an interest, I think we ought to approach them.
Mayor Protem.
I find it passing strange that someone would propose a project that's not wanted six months before an election, almost as though it were a bouquet handed to someone who had been jilted or dissatisfied with prior discussions. It just seems, why would we repeatedly attack projects that come forward from the university and then all of a sudden decide, well, we're going to make this project for you without even asking them first? Have you asked them about this now, since, in the last week? Have you asked them about this?
Actually, I thought it might be appropriate to bring it here and see if there was interest on the part of the council in asking. I don't think I have the authority to offer it on my own.
But why now? Why now? Why six months before the election?
Well, if you want me to answer, it was actually brought up sometime back. I brought it up, we'd have to look back on the agenda, quite some months ago, and I hadn't heard back any report on it, and so I thought it was time to renew the request. So this is actually not new. Infrastructure Task Force talked about it.
Actually, the concept has been around for at least a year. I know it has. Why are you proposing it now? See, what, what I'm saying is-
Because it seems like-
There's, the, the university probably has a strategic plan. Can we, can we just let them come forward with a request to do it? I've heard talk, and I sit on the parking committee for LUESK, and they haven't talked about a parking structure for a long time. If they wanted to, they know that it's in their back pocket, they can bring it forward for a, for some kind of a bond measure. What is to be gained from sticking this out there and saying, we're offering it to you? What's to be gained from that?
Are you, are you, would you be the spokesperson to negotiate with?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay.
And what, what's the point of that? See, what, what I want to know is what-
But you're on the parking committee, explained.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to respond to your comment. It, it's basically following up on something that's been brought up before, and it seems like it would be a good thing to try to push forward with. But if you don't want to, I think you'll have to give your opinion, but I think it'd be wise to try.
It just, it just sounds like penance to me.
No, it's not. It's just trying to see if we can move forward with something that would be of mutual benefit. Put whatever motive you want on it. It just seems like it'd be a good idea to work on something, again, that has been brought up in the past. So I'll leave it there.
Not a public hearing, but it's the interest of our former, former planning commission chairman, and I would like to give you the opportunity to speak. If we can just keep it brief, I would appreciate it.
One minute. This has been around for 20-plus years. Okay? All right? No. To get something that the city is, that's good for the city, you have to keep bringing it up until it finally clicks. All he's doing is bringing it up till it finally clicks. Look, 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 no, wait, wait, wait. I have the floor. I have the floor. Okay? For the next 30 seconds.
We'll agree on that.
The monorail designed by the Schaefer, by one of the Schaefers. Okay? 20-plus years ago. Marvelous for the city of Long Melinda. Hit them in their, put traffic, put, put parking meters up in town, 20, like, like in Laguna Beach, 25 cents every 15, every 15 minutes, right? A buck an hour. Get them onto the monorails and get them into large parking structures at the corners of the city. This is not a new idea. This has been around a long time. It deserves to be brought up time and time again until LUESK says, hey, you know, yeah, let's go. And all he's doing is saying, I mean, let's, let's give it a shot. Let's give it another shot. I think my minute's up.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to weigh in on this one. I'm not speaking in any position, have not talked to anyone in the university or Med Center about this project or potential project for many a year. Couple of things I will have to agree and disagree with my colleagues on both sides. I do agree, it's a concept that's been out there for some time. There may be some point in time it is appropriate to move forward with this project. I haven't heard via the grapevine and other informal discussions of recent immediate interest. However, I'm fully supportive and would support staff working with university and Med Center officials for discussion with this and see if it might be something they're interested in. However, I will totally agree with the comments. I'm not going to get into chronology of any specific projects or motives or whatever, but I do think there's not too many people that would disagree with the statement that there is a general consensus, I think, with many within the Med Center and university that are in powers of position, that they don't feel the city of Long Melinda and the city council has been as easy to work with or as cooperative as they think we should be, especially when they contrast that with projects they've had in other towns and the difference of the support and levels of cooperation that they've gotten in those other communities besides the city. So I think that is a fair statement. I personally would think it's going to be met with some fair skepticism moving forward currently based on those perceptions, but I'm all for and very supportive of asking staff to meet with the appropriate officials and explore moving in that direction.
Just a quick comment in response to Mr. Christensen. He mentioned the fact about putting a parking lot in the outskirts of town and putting people on the monorail, perhaps shuttling them in. And it reminded me of a conversation I had with Conrad, and you may recall that when we were talking about Area D, we, there was conceptually out there the possibility of using commercial space and possibly putting in parking structures. So one of the things I remember talking to Conrad about in his office was, well, wouldn't it be nice if maybe the university can utilize some of those parking structures where partially can be used by people who may come to the shopping centers over there, or some of the parking structures can be used for the university to bring people and shuttle them in? And I remember Conrad bringing that up to me, and I happened to talk to one of the folks in the university. I said, what do you think about the idea of putting in a parking lot on the outskirts of town and shuttling people in? And one of the things he told me was, first of all, you've got lots of issues. First, there's a lot of folks who come in here who are not employees or students, but they're actually patients, and it's very difficult to want to come in and then get on the shuttle and go to the hospital. So that becomes an issue. One of the other issues is with putting a parking structure on the outskirts of town is that the university would have to provide shuttle service, which is extremely expensive. The university spends three-quarters of a million dollars on the shuttle service they do have. So the only thing that really works for them is to put parking structures close to where their, where the folks are. So that's some of the problems with putting a parking structure on the outskirts of town. As far as the monorail, it sounds really good. I mean, the idea of putting people out, you know, parking them outside of town and bringing them on monorail sounds like a great idea. The problem you're going to run into with that is several. The monorail is extremely expensive, extremely expensive to build. That's number one, so we have to address that. The other problem is that a lot of folks who would use it come in at different times. So you either have a huge flow of people who all come into work waiting in line to get on a monorail because they have to make it in time, or you have people who trickle in. So the monorail cannot officially go back and forth continuously to move. You have to remember, we're talking about tens of thousands of people here. This isn't like Disneyland where people just kind of stream in throughout the day and then they kind of taper off and going home. They tend to all come in at once and all leave at once. That's why we got Anderson. It's a mess. So having a monorail may sound like a good idea, but it may not work for a large institution because you have too many people all coming in at one time. So that's why a parking lot close to where they work is really the best option. So anyway, when Mr. Christensen made those comments, it reminded me of some of the conversations that I had with Conrad and the university, and I just wanted to make sure people knew about that.
The specific direction that I believe on the agenda is discussion direction, directing staff to talk to Long Melinda University officials for potential parking structure, especially in regards to payment and construction via a bond system. Is there a consensus of the council to ask staff to have those discussions in a, that fashion with the university or, I assume, Med Center entities?
Yeah.
This, this funding vehicle is always available. We've known it's been available for 20 years. And why don't we just sit here and wait for somebody to come up with a strategic plan first that has that parking lot and to request it before we just grandstand and offer it to them? I don't get the grandstanding part. That's what I'm complaining about. I don't, I don't- part. That's what I'm complaining about. I don't have any problem with when somebody wants to use some kind of a government-sponsored bond to build some projects. I don't have any problem with that. And voting against that would not be my point. I just don't get the timing.
It's 10:30 at night, and it's just a simple suggestion if there's interest in doing it. I just think it's something we ought to do, but...
I have no problem with JARP talking to the university and offering any assistance we might have. I think that's always been available and doesn't require council vote. I think JARP is free to talk to them, and in fact, he talks to them all the time.
If there's consensus from council, and I believe I'm hearing that, I think we can at least give direction to JARP to indicate that we all are concerned about traffic and parking and would like to see if there's any other directions we can go in relation to helping build additional parking facilities. Is that...
That's it.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
All right. Consensus noted. Reports of officers, status of Stewart Street pedestrian signal. The only issue in looking on this agenda item, we've got a potential temporary certificate of occupancy with Loma Linda University. Again, Mr. City Attorney, I am concerned there could be potential conflict if it involves, you know, certificate of occupancy.
No.
Okay, if that's it, then you clarified that. Thank you. We have no action that we need to renew that. Perfect.
No, sir. Okay. Question on that. And that is, again, probably my office is closer to that than anybody else is sitting in the council here. If we give them a, if we have given them temporary occupancy permits without completing the project, my biggest concern is that if an accident should happen at that crosswalk without a signal, and we've given them temporary occupancy permits, are we putting ourselves out to some huge liability here?
My office isn't overlooking it, but I think you could make the argument just as effectively, we'd probably reduce pedestrian risk and traffic by having students that park with the new parking area, walk directly to the building and don't have to go across streets. If that building wasn't open, a lot of them would park down there and cross the street to get up to existing facilities. So to me, it is very theoretical.
No, but I mean, if somebody should actually be injured?
I think you can argue we took an action that we thought potentially would be safer by having temporary occupancy. That's my only viewpoint of it.
All right, I hear you.
Claims could be made in either situation, and obviously, we would defend those claims.
I would ask, along with this same report right here, since in the last week or two, I crossed there because I parked in the side and walked across that, well, should I say last night that I was almost hit by a Loma Linda security car at that intersection? This is the second time on Stewart Street that I've had my office there that I have been almost hit by a Loma Linda security car.
Doesn't surprise me.
And as I watch out my window, there are a lot of drivers that challenge people who are crossing that crosswalk, people in the middle of the crosswalk and people just was right by in the middle of that crosswalk. People are not obeying the signs. And somebody needs to be looking after that. We could have a problem there without that signal.
Sounds like a grade separation might be in order.
Signal will do the trick.
Status report.
Well, let me give you a status. University already bought the equipment, the pole, the controller, and now it's getting a contractor to install the signal. As interim, what the city is doing is we already ordered a sign similar to what we put at the, in front of Ben Mart Elementary School and in front of the FMO, not FMO, the one on Anderson here south of Barton Road. And so we're going to put it up as an interim for you.
The temporary certificate of occupancy, our report doesn't list how long that's good for. Is that time-related?
Yes. But also, that's why they also will provide us with the cash bond to make sure that they will install all the rest of offsite improvement. So they will do that.
Sir, are we contracting to, I mean, are we putting in the signal or are we...
Any questions of Mr. Typet with that status report? If not, we are, I'm sorry, I did kind of skip over reports of councilmen. Any other reports of councilman issues? No? Seeing none. Any other reports of officers? If not, city council meeting is adjourned.
Redevelopment Agency is back. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Are there any oral reports from the public on any non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move past item two, which we've dispensed with, to item number three, public hearing on CRA bill R-2009-21. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, due to the lateness of the hour, I'll be brief on this report. Implementation plans are required in five-year increments pursuant to the state community redevelopment law. And then there's a review midway between that time period. The plans themselves are required to describe goals and objectives for the redevelopment areas. They are to identify specific programs to be undertaken during that five-year period and to show how such programs would eliminate blight and implement the agency's affordable housing obligations. We originally adopted the implementation plan in 1994, which was the first year it was required, and we've adopted two since that time. So this would be our fourth one. Adopting the implementation plan does not approve any program identified in the plan, and it does not approve any budgetary allocation. The implementation plan pertains to the merged project area. We had Project One in 1980, and then it was amended by adding territory in 1994, and Project Area Two was adopted in 1987. And those two project areas with the amendment were then merged in 2000 for economic reasons. When we talk about blighting conditions, we're talking about deficient or deteriorated buildings and structures, uneconomical use of buildings and lots, incompatible uses, irregular lots, inappropriate access, underutilized property, such things as that. Affordable housing is a large part of the implementation plan. And as you know, we add and subtract affordable housing as projects are developed. We started out in 1994 by physically going through all the building permits and determining what our affordable housing deficit was. And at that time, it was a total of 187 units. Since that time, development has increased, and it has also decreased the deficit. I say that it increased the deficit because those projects that were built that did not actually build the affordable units but did a buyout added to the deficit. But having said that, it also provided us with the revenue to do other things, such as purchase property on Papa Street where our new projects are going and things of that nature. So there's a give and take in that. Right now, our current deficit is 302 units. We have 125 very low, 54 low, and 123 in moderate. That is the deficit. The projects on Papa Street will significantly reduce that and almost eliminate the very low and low deficit.
So that is not counted in this table yet?
That is not counted in this table, no. And, you know, an individual, single-family resident going in does also contributes to the deficit, but not on a one-to-one basis. So having said that, the implementation plan contains many tables. They're pretty much self-explanatory. If you have questions, I'd be glad to respond to them. The implementation plan does need to be adopted by state law by December 31. And so the recommendation is to adopt the resolution which approves the implementation plan. Then in 2011, 2012, it will be updated mid-year, midterm.
Does this have to go through some certification process now? Does this have to be approved by...
No, you are the approving body. You are the approving body. It goes nowhere else.
Does this meet...
Yes, this meets redevelopment law.
It does?
Yes.
So this doesn't have to go through a review process by them yet?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, are there any other questions of the secretary or comments? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Motion is in order on CRA bill R-2009-21.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition to the bill? Seeing none, it's passed. We have the minutes.
Move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Seeing none, it's approved. Item number Who are the community advisors?
As well. This, we just received our audit report. Many, much of the information that is contained in the audit report is transferred to what we call the HCD report that has to be submitted to the state by the year end. And so being that there's only one meeting this month, we've asked that permission to automatically file that without you having reviewed it in advance. So the request is to authorize the middle of the report by December 31.
I'll take a chance and move that action.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Seeing none, it's carried. Item number six. Madam Secretary.
If you remember, about three years ago, the Redevelopment Agency financed first-time homebuyer loans with the proviso that within that three-year period, outside financing be attempted. With this market, loans are not available, and so the agency is requesting that the board authorize us to refinance their balance. It will be refinanced at the terms that were previously approved for the more recent first-time homebuyer program. So there would be an interest rate and a 30-year term, and the covenant runs with the land and so forth. So this would be a refinancing for buyers that are already in their homes and have been for a three-year period.
Just a quick question on that. In doing so, does that limit our ability to give out any other loans for any other future people who may qualify financially?
Uh, no.
Should we take these separately or together?
Together is fine.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we pass council bill R-2009-22 and council bill R-2009-23.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? And I think there are the council bills or Redevelopment Agency bills?
The Redevelopment Agency.
Okay, just clarifying.
It's hard to read the acronyms. Sorry.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, is there any opposition? Hearing none, it is carried. And number seven.
Item seven pertains to a home that is within the Parkside tract. It's being offered to the agency for purchase by the original owner who has outgrown the property and is moving on, which is the intent of the program. The offer of the 155 has been accepted. The agency does have a second on the home, and that would be satisfied through this transaction. This would retain the covenant.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Seeing none, it's passed, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.
You're not going to give me a chance for report?
Oh, you want to do a report?
Yes.
Go for it.
Long city council meetings have an advantage. Keep RDA meetings short.
Okay, we're adjourned again.